All right. Good evening, everyone. It is February 22nd, excuse me, February 2nd, 2021. You are at the monthly voting meeting of the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commission, and we're glad to have you with us, whether you're watching via social media on Charter TV or reviewing the tape afterwards. I'm going to go ahead and ask Clerk Sprattland to call roll for us as we begin.
Davenport.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Link.
Here.
Wright.
Present.
Denson.
Here.
Poole.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Thornton.
Yeah.
Handy.
Here.
We have a forum.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate it. All right. Before we move into the formal agenda, even approval of minutes, we are lucky because Veronica Blet from EPA is with us, and she has an award for Public Utilities Department. So Veronica, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Sure. Thank you. Um, I'm happy to get you started on a high note. It sounds like you're a long evening ahead of you, so maybe this will be a nice, exciting thing to start with. So, good evening, Mayor Gertz and members of the Commission. I am Veronica Bloody. I'm the manager of the US EPA's WaterSense program. And at WaterSense, we are focused on helping consumers find simple ways to save water through the use of more water for ship products practices and professionals. And I spoke scallywag flow over here with our little friend, Mr. Pooh, and I are very happy to be able to join you here from Washington DC with some good news. So while I know that you are familiar with WaterSense, I want to emphasize a point. We operate as a voluntary partnership program, key on voluntary and key on partnership. And our partners include the manufacturers make the products, retailers who sell them, and the promotional partners. And amongst the promotional partners, I really do consider the water utilities and the local governments to be the most critical partners because you guys are on the front lines and communicating with the consumers. So much of the programming that we do is really focused on working with them and giving them tools to make their jobs easier. We have more than 2,000 partners across the country, including 35 local government and utility partners in Georgia, and they have helped us save more than 4.4 trillion gallons of water and 87 billion in consumer bills since 2006. And one of the highlights of my year is the annual recognition of our partners of the year. These are folks who have gone above and beyond our expectations in promoting the program. And this year, we had 29 awards, which we usually would have given out at the Water Smart Innovations Conference in October. But COVID-19, as we all know, had other things in mind. So I'm really happy to be able to join you here today to recognize the Athens Clark County Public Utilities Department with the WaterSense Sustained Excellence Award. I'll do the virtual handoff here to Lori. I can't see where she is, but she's taking it away. Um, this is your fourth Sustained Excellence Award. You guys are going to need like a trophy case, and it really shows that you are succeeding across the board from educating consumers to promoting labeled products to taking advantage of strategic collaboration. As a small voluntary program to help consumers save water, energy, and money, we need to rely on the efforts of others to help us spread the word. And in 2019, ACC stepped up in a big way by engaging our consumer campaigns and connecting with consumers. During a webinar we put out in our highlight our award winners, I noted some of your outreach effort. One that I really liked was the collaboration with the DMV to show WaterSense videos as people were sitting there waiting. I know it's like torture to sit in the DMV, but maybe they got a little bit of enjoyment and a few water tips while they were waiting. And I'd like to think, and since it's February, and I did see this, that you guys said last year, I don't know that you could do it this year, but you had that romantic tour that you provided at the North Akani Water Reclamation Facility, which is really sweet Valentine's Day. Whenever I think of of the water conservation program at ACC, I think about education. And your staff are developing your future water stewards by educating them on the value of water and what water makes possible. From the Little Lily traveling book bag to the Ripple Effects Film Festival to Imagine a Day Without Water, you are helping residents understand the connections between their actions and the health of people and the sustainability of their environment. And I know people are getting it, which is why you've also been a winner in the Wile and National Mayor's Challenge, with whom we've also worked, and why I heard the mayor of Gainesville, Florida had to wear red and black. And I know that the dog's pride runs deep because one of my staff went to Georgia, and I have to look at a background with Ugg of the Tent on all of our video meetings. Finally, it's also nice to see how you integrate WaterSense into so many of your outreach materials and events. Our spoke scallywag flow over here enjoys her frequent visits to town, and it's very rewarding for us to see how you adapt our materials for use. I have to think that people have greater brand awareness in your area than many of our other partners. And I have to say, I have never seen a WaterSense-themed gingerbread house, so that was pretty awesome to look at. So as you can see, I am more, I'm really excited about the QD's activities. Believe me, there was a lot more I could have mentioned here today to help contribute to your award recognition. And I think you can be proud of your efforts and the commitment of Lori and Jackie and all of your agency staff working on water conservation efficiency. I know that 2020 was a real challenge, but your staff have done well to pivot their activities to respond to the crisis. And the reason that I know this is because they helpfully participate in efforts we have underway to gather best practices to share with other partners. And only last week, Jackie spoke in a webinar to more than 100 partners from across the country to share your experiences. Lastly, I understand from the department that there's a significant commitment and understanding from the mayor and the commission regarding the importance of water's value in the community. You make all of their efforts possible, and for that, I personally thank you. I look forward to an awards application for 2020 and seeing what you have in store for the future, looking for that fifth Sustained Excellence Award. So again, congratulations and best wishes for more achievements, and thank you for the time today. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything you might want to ask me about.
Veronica, thank you so much. Lori, fantastic work. Very excited about everything Public Utilities does. Any, anything you'd like to provide for Mayor and Commission and the public, Lori?
I'd just like to say thank you again to all of you, for all that you do to provide us with resources to promote water efficiency in Athens. And I second that, thanking the mayor and commission for all that you do to support this too. Our community is fantastic, very water efficient. And it shows in our per capita gallon use, how we go down every year in our per capita, even with our population increasing. So we appreciate everything that the commission does, the mayor does, and that our community does. We couldn't do it without you. And thank you, WaterSense. Just by putting on a WaterSense label product, people automatically start saving water without doing any other behavior change. So we appreciate that. Look forward to how we continue to provide good, clean water for Athens Clark County. So thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you both. Veronica, we look forward to you being here in person. And thank you to members of the public who make this possible every day through your smart behavior. So y'all have a great night. We appreciate you being with us. Look forward to the next one.
Thank you very much. Take care.
All right, everybody. We are going to move forward with approval of minutes of Tuesday, January 6th, Tuesday, January 12th, and Thursday, January 14th. Do I hear a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I believe I've got a motion from Commissioner Poole and a second from Commissioner Wright, all in favor of approval of those minutes. Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. We have minutes from those three days approved. Um, Madam Clerk, are there any written communications today?
Are we on mute, Jean?
Madam Clerk, I think you're muted. There we go. Jean, do we have any written communications tonight?
Yes. To answer to the record, we have a report of the 2020 overview commission.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And everybody, you have a copy of that report in your mailboxes if you haven't received that already. I do need to note that in the mayor's report tonight, I'll be asking for commission confirmation of a couple of board appointments. And, and so I want to make that clear at the outset. In terms of order of events this evening, we're going to begin with our planning and zoning items and then enter executive session. So for members of the public, after planning and zoning items, your screens will go dark for approximately an hour for five, five executive session items on either property transfer or pending or threatened litigation, and then we will return for our consent agenda and our old and new business. So, um, we have first order of business number one. This is regarding 155 Mitchell Street. And I'm going to go ahead and ask, is there any public input on this item tonight?
Mayor, there's no one to speak on this item tonight.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Commissioner Wright.
Um, thank you, everybody. I've tried to keep everybody posted in email, and I will continue to do so. The applicant for this has met with Mayor Gertz and received some feedback that they want to process and come forward for our consideration at the March meeting. So I'd like to make a motion that we, is it proper? Is it a hold, Kelly, that I'm?
Yes. Hold that still on March vote meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we put this on hold for the March vote meeting.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, there is an ordinance. I'll read it just to meet with procedural requirements.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. I appreciate it.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending a planned development for a parcel of land comprising approximately 1.7 acres, located at 155 Mitchell Street in the CD RIV PD Commercial Downtown River Downtown Design Area, Planned Development District, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Judd. All right. I believe I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright to hold for one month, a second from Commissioner Davenport. Any further input? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we will further discuss this in, all right. Moving on to item number two. Uh, this regards 47 acres at 5090 and 5098 Old Jefferson Road. Rick, is there any public input on this item?
Mayor, there's no one here to speak on this item either.
All right. We go ahead and turn this over to Commissioner Denson then.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have been working with some constituents and also developers talking through this project, and there was a lot of concern from the planning commission, along with this commission and a lot of people in the area, that there was not a binding site plan presented along with this. So, uh, talking with constituents and developers, they have proposed and sent in a binding site plan uh, that has some great things, an increased tree canopy and water buffers and a multi-use trail in the public park. But, uh, there still is definitely some very valid concerns around transportation infrastructure capacity. So I am recommending that we send this back to the planning commission with that binding site plan attached uh, for a proper evaluation from the planning commission and staff.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Tim. Judd, could you go ahead and read the ordinance on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning two parcels of land comprising approximately 47 acres, located at 5090 and 5098 Old Jefferson Road, from RS8 Single Family Residential to RS5 Single Family Residential and for other purposes.
Thanks, Judd. So we've got a motion from Commissioner Denson and a second from Commissioner Link. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So this will return to the planning commission for further review. All right. We are moving on to item number three. These are proposed text amendments, design standards in the CD zone. And Judd, I'll go ahead and have you read the ordinance as we begin.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to design areas and for other purposes.
All right. Thank you, Judd. Any input on this item? Commissioner Link?
Um, yeah, I proposed a CDO with Commissioners Thornton and Hamby um, for these design standards to just have them apply to the north downtown area. Um, you know, we believe that it's, it's not really appropriate to kind of give away this card for the entire part of downtown. You know, we have this ground floor commercial requirement for a reason. It's widely encouraged by folks who are experts in urbanism to encourage that vibrant, actually, no, we're on the design standard. Sorry. I have two CDOs. Um, but this one is the commercial downtown of the zone. Um, I'm proposing that we go ahead and rezone north downtown, commercial downtown. Um, but we exempt those privately owned residential properties, the row of townhomes on College Avenue, as well as the cluster of two-story homes that are behind the Linden House. And Commissioners Hamby and Thornton are, have signed on to this as well.
I'll second.
I think Commissioner Link may have these in reverse order.
Do I? I'm sorry.
The text amendments to the design overlays goes first, and then you will vote on the zoning second.
Okay. So we're talking about the design overlays first. Okay. Just, all right. Well, let's talk about the design, the design overlays and the commercials on the ground floor. Um, yeah, I won't repeat myself, and I'll just propose that we approve the CDO.
I second.
That one too.
All right. Thank you. Further discussion?
I just appreciate on Groundhog Day not repeating yourself. I thought that was nice.
Any others? All right. One, one note I will make, and we had some email conversation about this, is that a consideration we may contemplate forwarding to the planning commission in the future for these zones is as we get into the inclusionary zoning space and we're working to incentivize affordable units, we may want to ask if one of those formal opportunities is to provide either affordable units on the ground floor or light square footage within a commercial downtown zoned property on one of these secondary or tertiary streets that the staff mentions in the report. So I just want to provide that as something that we may want to look at later this year as the planning commission continues to bring us some of that encouragement of affordable units. So we have a motion from Commissioner Link on the floor, a second from Commissioner Hamby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Uh, we're going to move on to the, to the rezoning of the specific property now. And Judd, if you could read this, and then we'll go ahead and get into the discussion.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending the official future development map of Athens Clark County by changing the designation of multiple parcels of land comprising 41.47 acres, located at 120 and 250 West Daughtry Street, 535, 556 North Hole Street, 135 and 291 Hoyt Street, 105, 155 Hickman Drive, 50910 College Avenue, 0150 Ware Street, 160 and 230 East Strong Street, and 550 North Jackson Street from Government Mixed Density Residential and Employment Center to downtown and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. And Melissa, this is where you wanted to retain status quo on some properties that front on College Avenue.
Yes, yes. These are the townhomes that front College Avenue, as well as a cluster of, I believe it's six two-story homes right behind there, kind of behind the Linden House. Um, you know, I feel like a rezoning to commercial could, could really kind of speed up displacement of some of the residents there, some of who are long-term residents, working class. Um, I also, you know, questioned the appropriateness of commercial downtown zoning directly adjacent to the Linden House. You know, I think that we need to have a broader conversation about transitional zoning when it comes to downtown and adjacent neighborhoods. So I'd like to propose that we exempt those particular properties from the rezone to commercial downtown.
Just real quickly, Mayor, did you call for any opportunity for public comment on this?
You know, I did not. I appreciate that, Brad. Is there any input from the public? Rick, are you down there?
Uh, yes. There's no one here to speak on the downtown issues tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for the catch, Brad. I appreciate that. Um, Brad or Judd, do you have either the tax parcel or the addresses kind of associated with the parcels that would remain under the current zoning?
I think those have been built into the CDO ordinance.
Okay.
The CDO, um, remove 910 College Avenue, which is a cluster of six two-story homes, and 800 through 892 College Avenue, which is 24 townhomes from the rezone proposal so that these properties maintain their current zoning, which is CO and RM2 respectively.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any further input on this item?
I second. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. I've got a motion from Commissioner Link, a second from Commissioner Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. We're going to move forward to item number five, which regards 2400, 2480, and 2490 Lexington Road. Is there any public input on, on this rezoning?
Yes, sir. The applicant's here.
Great.
Mr. Smith has signed up for 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening.
Hi, Mayor Gertz, Commissioners. My name is Bob Smith with Smith Planning Group, and I'm here tonight representing Trinidadas. And don't worry, I won't take up the 10 minutes. Many thanks to you and to the wider community for your engagement and thoughtful questions and conversations as we've developed the plans for this project. We started the planning process over a year ago, and have been engaged with the planning staff, stakeholders, neighbors, and members of this body ever since the beginning. We've listened and done our, and done our best to respond to the comments and input we received. We thoughtfully considered and used the numerous recent planning studies to inform our plan, including Connect Athens Corridor Plans for Athens Highway, or I'm sorry, Atlanta Highway and Lexington Road, Envision Athens, Athens in Motion, Finding Home, and the ULI Strategy to Redevelop and Revitalize the Lexington Road Corridor. I think by incorporating these extensive studies and the community feedback has made the plan better. And we've even redesigned, completely redesigned one of the buildings and added additional landscape buffers to help address neighbors' concerns over noise and sightlines. The proposed development brings significant benefits to Athens, which include catalytic investment for Lexington Road, including a new signalized intersection, additional sidewalks or a multimodal path along the property's frontage on Lexington Road, a new enhanced bus stop, green space, and a mile-long nature trail. Perhaps more importantly, the proposed development can help a housing, can help fill a housing void for Athens by incorporating a 15% set aside of the market rate dwelling units for workforce housing, providing housing for those who make between 60 and 120% of the area median income. The workforce housing units will have the same level of finishes as market rate units and will target healthcare workers, teachers, police officers, firefighters, and municipal employees, among others. It fills an important void for those who don't qualify for federally subsidized programs and can't afford market rate rents. The 15% set aside equates to 66 dwelling units, which will be a combination of studio, one, and two-bedroom apartments. We want to emphasize four important points. Number one, the amenities within the project will be open and accessible to all residents, no matter if they occupy a workforce housing unit or a market rate unit. Number two, the 15% set aside of workforce housing will open and be brought to the marketplace at the same time as the market rate housing units. Number three, oversight of the workforce housing will be provided by the Athens Land Trust. The oversight agreement has been executed, and I believe a copy of the agreement was forwarded to you today. The workforce housing set aside will also be enforced through a deed restriction. This provision is contained in the oversight agreement. The developer has agreed that all four of these items can be placed as a condition of approval. In addition, the developer has proposed to convert 54 additional dwelling units to workforce housing with a $2 million investment from the District 6 Tax Allocation District. This would not increase the total number of units in the development. The additional workforce housing units would be converted from the market rate units. The property taxes for the proposed development would self-fund this request and additionally would contribute approximately $700,000 annually to the area schools and provide additional funds to the District 6 TAD that could be used for other public benefits. Most important, the $2 million investment request would come at no additional cost to the city because it is being self-funded by the development's incremental property taxes. In addition to the four conditions I mentioned earlier, the developer also agrees to the following three conditions for the project. Number one, the developer shall dedicate an additional 10 feet to the public right of way along Lexington Road for the purpose of a sidewalk or multimodal path that will be built and paid for by the developer. Number two, the developer will provide four electric charging stations within the designated parking areas for the benefit of the residents. areas for the benefit of the residents. And number three, the developer agrees that the traffic signal at the primary entrance on Lexington Road will be installed prior to project completion and funded by the developer. Finally, timing of this vote is very important for this project moving forward. We ask that a vote be taken tonight. We ask for your support of this catalytic development that incorporates impactful community benefits, including significant workforce housing to the Athens community. Thanks again, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there any other public input on this item?
Good evening. Thank you for your consideration and all your input and listening ear, as I'm one of the residents that will be right, directly impacted by this forever. This is going to be an irreversible change in not only all of the residents that reside on Shady Brook Drive, but the whole east side area in that corridor as a whole. Once anything is approved, we will have no recourse. And I just want to state that it's not only the personal lives and the lifestyle that will be impacted, but it will also be the ecological as well as the environmental aspect because our precious vital tree canopy will probably be decimated with this as long as, and also the green space. Just the magnitude of this project alone is inadequate for that particular property. Environmentally, it's, there's not enough parking in there, and we will get all of the impact of the pollution as well as noise. There still is no guarantee we won't, and once this project is approved, what are we going to do? I've been there twenty-five years, built a family, raised a family there, and intended to probably leave that, leave the planet there and leave that property to my children. And for me to have to endure that, and especially with no recourse of what to do except at age seventy-one, have to relocate and start over again, I'm asking that it not be approved. I listened to some of the adoptions that the developer has made. Is this congruent? I ask all of us when we decided about what the corridor should look like. Definitely needs improvement, but not at this magnitude. Three and four-story buildings are not going to be conducive to what anybody envisions along that, and it's to support businesses and residential, not massive of this great magnitude rental units. And we all know that it'll end up with student housing, which will be noisier and a greater impact to all of us there. I'm asking that all the things that Mr. Smith mentioned, none of us are privy of. I know it was sent to you all, but there's being adoptions made. Well, what guarantee, either legal or any other recourse that we might have as neighbors for changing and really massively changing our lives? So that's why I'm asking that we go back and rethink all of this.
Ma'am, thank you for coming to tonight. I need to get your name for the record though.
My name, I'm sorry. My name is Tess Cunningham. This could be moved way out where there's no impact on the environment, further out Lexington Road on clear-cut land.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your consideration.
Further public input on this item tonight? Judd, could you go ahead and, oh, there is another one. Go right ahead, sir.
Yeah. Hi. Okay. Hi, my name's Lynn Faust. I live on Shady Brook Drive. Thank you for the Commissioners that have communicated with me and visited and with our neighbors on Shady Brook Drive. As different emails have communicated, as you know, it's a high-density, a thousand beds. As a resident of the east side of Athens, I want this project to be successful and an asset to our community. And does this fit into the comprehensive plan for that? Is the disruption and destruction of the forty acres of wooded lot the right thing to do right now in this area? The footprint this development will make as it is presented is not considering the value of the surrounding habitat. I'm very concerned about the environmental impact. The three streams that border this property have steep banks and important repairing zones, as I've already shared in detail. Construction will take part in this seventy-five-foot buffer zone that will take decades to recover as the plans now stand. I strongly urge reconsideration for the placement of the path and walls in or near this zone, and accountability for our Athens Clark County repairing zone above and beyond the ordinances. How much grading will be required, and how many mature trees will be destroyed? Flora and fauna benefits our community, our health, both physically and mentally, as every day you see in the newspaper. Paved sidewalks connected to Lexington Road and thus the businesses and bus stops along the highway have been needed for years. Now there's a thousand more people who want to walk along Lexington Highway, and all we have is a worn dirt path that's dangerous to travel, especially in the rain and at night. Isn't this where we need infrastructure in place first? The developers agreed to provide four electrical charges. House is forward-thinking. If this is to be a financially sustainable housing development for decades, please require more, or at least the electrical foundation, so the property will not be obsolete in ten years. Some residents of Shady Brook feel this is being approved mainly because of the workforce housing component. After all, the planning commission voted against this project. Fifteen percent workforce housing was offered, and we pushed for more. However, we're very wary how this will take place, when and how, and maybe that has been addressed, but we're not aware of that. Please be aware of the fifteen percent, as ISOIT stated. It says fifteen percent of bedrooms, not, and I think it should be fifteen percent of bedrooms, not dwelling units. Please review the details of the proposal before voting. I hope you'll delay your vote tonight. My wish is for everything to be legally binding and commitments for the care and development of this property above and beyond what's presently available now into the future, especially when ownership changes hands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming out this evening. Further public input on this item?
May I take off my mask?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. My name is Donald Curry, C-U-R-R-I-E. I live at one-eighty Shady Brook, three-zero-six-zero-five. I have voiced several concerns to you in an email, and thank you for taking the time to read my email. I have a major concern, and that is that this decision is being made rather quickly. There's a lot of loose ends that seem to exist, both small and large. Without having those nailed down, I'm concerned that a decision can be made that would prevent ACC from deriving all the possible benefits from this project. It could either be a significant piece of property for the county, or it might be an ISOIT. As the previous speaker mentioned, there's the potential that it could be obsolete sometime here in the near future. I hope that doesn't happen. The other thing that I would ask you to think about is, are the teeth in whatever you're requiring big enough to motivate the builder to follow the plan? The builder would have no reason to object to large teeth in the agreement because after all, they intend to do what they're being asked to do. So it's not a threat to them, but it certainly helps to make me more comfortable that they'll do what they intended to do. This is a project that will affect perhaps as much as four percent of the population of the county directly. About eight-tenths of the population will be living there, and then depending on where you draw the neighborhood boundaries, there might be another three percent or more that would be impacted directly by this project. That seems like a significant population and might require very careful consideration because if you make a great decision, it's wonderful. If it's a bad decision, it could be a travesty for us all. I believe in wisdom that's lasted more than a hundred years. So let me quote Ben Franklin, who over two hundred years ago said that haste makes ways. I hope you'll delay this. Take the time to make a well-considered decision so that we all benefit, including the builder, to the full extent this project has to offer. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for coming to us this evening. Is there further public input on the Lexington Highway project?
That's all the input.
Thank you, Rick. All right. I'll go ahead and have Judd read the ordinance to begin with.
In ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending the official future development map of Athens Clark County by changing the designation of three parcels of land comprising approximately forty-point-nine-three acres located at twenty-four-hundred-twenty-two, excuse me, located at twenty-four-hundred-twenty-four-eighty and twenty-four-ninety Lexington Road from general business and traditional neighborhood to general business and mixed-density residential and for other purposes.
Thanks, Judd. I appreciate it. Commissioner Parker, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you since this is in your district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to everyone that showed up from Shady Brook to express your concerns this evening. It's been great corresponding with you all via email and meeting with you all over the last, I guess, year that we've been working on this project to see how your concerns can be addressed through some conditions for approval on this project. And tonight I'll try to answer some lingering questions that remain. But I want to start out by talking about like what, you know, what we want as a body, I believe, how this project in many ways accomplishes it, and then invite some discussion of any questions that folks may have outstanding from conversations with adjacent residents, et cetera, and kind of decide where we want to go from there. I mean, I think we all agree that we want to not only address the crisis of affordable of housing in our community, but get affordable housing. And I think that this project does that in two ways. In addition to having, without any subsidy, the sixty-six units of workforce housing in that building fronting the property. It also helps drive down, in the long term, drive down costs for housing across Athens as a whole by adding to the supply. We've seen in previous cycles of older developments that what started out as student housing might, in a generation or so, become the kind of housing that working-class folks find appealing or attractive for, you know, within their income range. And I think that the more units that we, you know, add to the housing stock here in Athens, we, you know, oversupply then drives down demand and it makes them ultimately cheaper. And so I think that this project accomplishes that in two ways. And also in taking some pressure off of our in-town neighborhoods that are experiencing gentrification helps ensure that a lot of the single-family homes and neighborhoods like mine that have historically, you know, been in families for generations don't end up getting flipped into student housing because they're student, or, you know, student-purposed developments that students can live in together. And so I think that helps address some of our housing issues there as well. We've previously known this body talked about the importance of working-class folks having access to really dope amenities and not just, you know, the basics. You know, if you're, if you're getting like a below-market rate rent, you know, you still deserve to go to the pool, walk on the trail, go to the community garden. And that's something that I'm really pleased with in this project as one of the conditions for approval, that all of those amenities will be accessible to everyone, regardless of whether you live in a market-rate unit or not. I know there are some concerns about the environmental impacts of the project, which would probably be the case whether it was a planned development or something don't fly right in this area. But with regards to things like construction within the seventy-five-foot buffer, thinking about the fact that the trail is being built within that area, it's going to be a mulched trail. It's not paved sidewalk or anything like that. And as such, their construction should be minimally invasive to the existing vegetation and wildlife. I've had some questions about conservation of the existing forest coverage and what kind of plants will be left behind in the wake of that, and the vegetation removal for the creation of the trail. And the project as a whole, they'll be focused on removing invasives, and so that'd actually be better for the ecology and the wildlife of the area that have more native species there to get some of that kudzu and other sorts of stuff out of the way. I had another question regarding the TAD request for the project that I'll jump back to really quick. I think it was Commissioner Myers perhaps that asked about the workforce housing units that are waiting upon approval for TAD funding by the Citizens Advisory Committee. So how that would work is that, and maybe Mr. Smith touched on this briefly, but the market-rate unit, market-rate units we built into the workforce housing building at the front of the property, and upon reception of those TAD funds could be converted to workforce housing upon approval of those funds. And so that's kind of like how that all will work. If folks have other questions, we'd be happy to talk through them tonight. I, in general, would like to see this move forward. I know that the developers are on a tight timeline, given that they have had this property under contract since two thousand and nineteen and have had three extensions since then, and that their current contract expires, I believe, on the fifteenth of February. But given that I spoke with Heather Benham from the Land Trust about the oversight agreement that I sent out to you all earlier today, and he is waiting on the approval of their board in order for them to execute that. And so we got advice from the attorneys that we should perhaps hold in order for us to make the executed version of that contract binding as a condition of approval for the PD. So given that, if folks are open to it, I would like to hold for a week to get that done, as well as address any questions that folks may have remaining, and vote on this item at the February ninth, a special call session on February ninth ahead of our work session next week.
Thanks, Commissioner Parker. I'd be glad to schedule that session if the commission so desires. Other input? Commissioner Hamby?
Sure, thank you. I appreciate the comments from Mr. Smith, Commissioner Parker, and especially the residents that live along there. You know, I think, I think, I think as we're doing this job, our clients are the people we represent. The developer has a client he represents, but ours are the people that elect us and ask us to listen to them and to stand up for them. I will say this development is huge. This is a big, big development. If you look on page, I don't know what, I'm looking on the website, but it's Exhibit A3 on the plan. Just take a look at how, how much this building is going to tower over the Shady Brook Drive residence. I don't know which Shady Brook Drive residence it is, but it's on Exhibit A3. You know, and you gotta, you just kinda, you kinda have to think about that, about this plan. I mean, you know, I know we need workforce development, as Commissioner Parker has pointed out, but we can have workforce development here, and we can have it here if it's done right. I mean, there's no, there's no reason why we have to build, or somebody has to, or we have to approve such a big, huge building to, in order to get the affordable housing that we need. I mean, we're approaching this, you know, that's, I mean, I'll look forward to the inclusionary zoning discussion that I'm hoping planning brings forward to us because, because I think that's going to help give us some guidelines about, about what developers expect and what we expect when they bring projects to us. The affordable housing component with this developer was an afterthought. You know, it didn't pass mustard at the planning commission, so they decided to include that in. And, and I just, you know, that's fine. It's all well and good. Better late than It's all well and good, better late than never. But, but, but the fact is, fact is that this is a, a big, a big development. They would have, they're going to have to build sidewalks anyway, so we get that. I'm glad they're giving four charging stations, but you know, as we move forward in this, in this economy, ours are going to be driving themselves before too long and they'll go, you know, we're going to need more than four. So I appreciate the forward thinking and at least giving the four, but, and, and, and to suggest that within a generation that this, that all of it will be affordable and that, you know, so we're all going to, all of us here will die before this whole project is, is, is affordable for everybody in this community. And I, I think it's got a lot of questions and concerns. I think the neighbors have raised some valid points. I, I appreciate people that have been there for, for a while. This doesn't, you know, I know, I know we always talk about this sort of the NIMBYism, but you know, folks like on Shady Brook have made an investment in this community for a long time. It's not NIMBYism, it's, it's just making sure that their investment's protected as well. And, and I can, I appreciate that. So that's all I've got to say for right now. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know that holding it a week is going to, is going to change my mind. I'm certainly not, you know, I, I'm not concerned about a developer's timeline. I don't think any of us should be concerned about that. I think we ought to be concerned about, about the impact it has on the community and, and, and go from there. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's out of our hands. So it's, appreciate, appreciate you letting me say those few words.
Other commissioner input before I circle back to Commissioner Parker. Commissioner Hool and then Link and then Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so first I guess I'll echo Commissioner Hamby that this development is huge. I mean, we're looking at, I think it's almost 1% of our county's current population that could be housed here if we filled the full 1,050 or so. So that's just, just the magnitude of this, I think, warrants some, some deep consideration. And I do think that this, once again, like other planning items in recent months and even items three and four tonight, really underscores the pressing need for us as a body to look at planning and zoning codes that will incentivize affordable and sustainable housing, so we don't have to keep kind of taking these things ad hoc. But, you know, nonetheless, we don't have those yet and people are going to continue to try to develop things. So I really, really appreciate the effort put in by Commissioner Parker and others and the developers to try to make this something that's of more benefit to the community. So I don't want to let the, the lack of those more comprehensive policies that we need get in the way of us getting something decent out of this. It's just hard for me to gauge really how, how this shakes out as, as decent or not. I really feel like the residents' concerns need to be taken seriously. I'm sure we've only heard a fraction of those tonight. And I also just think we need more time to look over the details of the CDO, which I know is why Commissioner Parker is proposing kicking it for a week. I do wonder, I guess I have a technical question. If we delay one week, does that forego our opportunity to delay longer than that if we need more than a week?
Ultimately, we can, I think we ultimately can delay for 40 days. Attorney Drake or Brad, I don't know if that can be segmented.
You, you can hold one time for up to 40 days. So I would not think if you, if you held reconsidered it, it's repeating next week, then opt to continue that hold as long as you're, you're not extending beyond the initial 40 days, I would think it would be okay.
Okay, so would it make sense then to have a hold of 40 days past tonight and we can still discuss it next week, but not corner ourselves into making a decision? I guess I'm wondering if we need to like, if we would need to amend Commissioner Parker's proposal and if so, if it'd be amenable to that, Commissioner Parker?
Well, I want to say I'm, I, I agree, I would rather, I don't know the answer with your asking about the bifurcated process. I know the ordinance allows it to be held for up to 40 days. So I wouldn't, I apologize, but I don't want to make an answer or something I don't know. The only thing I can certainly say is what the planning director said. I'll certainly research that and be prepared the next time it comes up, but it's the first time I've dealt that issue since I've been with the unified government. The clerk may be able to speak to his past experiences with the unified government.
I'm not honestly, Mr. Drake, I'm not sure that we've done it in a, in a process like this where we may vote on it. To make a motion, a, a single motion to hold it for no more than 40 days would get you to the March meeting. And I don't know that that would limit you from voting on it at some point sooner in the process if, if you wanted to. The only concern I would have at that point, I guess, is making sure that there is ample notice to the community to, to know when they plan on voting on something.
Yeah, that was something I wondered, Brad, is there another public notice requirement that has to run per the ordinance? But I don't.
I mean, I, I think generally if we, we would generally run the, the notice again. I mean, and that's kind of, I'm arguing against what I just said, but you know, if it was specifically held to a date specific coming out of this public hearing, I think we've probably satisfied the public hearing process and would allow them to vote on it. But I would, I would have concerns with simply just holding it. And then, you know, they may vote on it next week, they may not. You know, I, I think we would need to provide some kind of notice.
Just in, as, as agenda setter, I'll go ahead and just stand by the week old. I think that should provide everybody sufficient time to digest the components of the mission divided option. Commissioner Hool, did you have any other questions?
I'll let others go and if I have anything lingering at the end, maybe try to pipe back in, but thank you very much.
All right, I've got Commissioner Link, Myers, and then Wright.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I really like this project. You know, it, it, it follows the guidance of, you know, new urbanist development where you want a variety of housing types and you want your mixed use. You have your commercial, it includes the workforce housing. I think the fact that there's a stoplight coming out of this is a huge bonus. There's a real need for some additional stoplights on Lexington to, to slow that traffic down, especially as you're entering that commercial node where I know there have been a lot of fatal accidents near, near that Walmart. You know, and, and the fact that we're locating a very dense housing project near a vibrant commercial center, you know, that, that makes for an ideal location for it. I do understand the residents' concerns, you know, when they're, you're living in single-family homes on fairly large lots, the idea of three and four-story buildings being, you know, a couple hundred feet away is kind of scary, but as someone who lives in town, you know, and, and seeing three and four and five and six-story buildings going up, you know, all around me, it's, it's not a big deal. You know, it's, and, and, and looking at the project, the buffers go way beyond what's required. You know, we have this 75-foot required buffer from the stream and it looks like it's doubled in, in most cases. You know, I, I, I understand, I, I, I understand the concerns, but we have a real need for increased housing. UGA is increasing their enrollment. You know, we've got a, a pretty desperate housing situation. There's a lot of pressure being put on our in-town neighborhoods. And unless we want to start allowing these developers to bulldoze in-town neighborhoods to keep developing in town, we're going to have to start looking a little further out for some of our denser new housing. And this is a, a fairly ideal location, being that it is very, very adjacent to commercial amenities, to jobs and services. And, you know, we're getting this mixed-use trail out of it. There are plans to line that entire, all of Lexington with a mixed-use trail. In a few years, these folks living here could ride their bikes all the way into downtown on that trail. I, I do think it is forward-thinking. I understand the idea of the lost tree canopy, you know, but they, they do have a plan to replant, you know, significant tree coverage and, and these sidewalks have nice verges with plantings in them. And that whole back end is preserved. So I, I really, I think we've got to face the music here. And if we are going to accommodate the growth that this community is facing, we're going to have to find these pockets of density throughout the community. We can't just throw it all in town because it's putting undue strain on our in-town neighborhoods, our in-town infrastructure, downtown itself. And also, you know, the, it, you know, because of student housing, these students do have money and they can spread that money around in different parts of town and it can really help kind of generate more economy throughout the community, not just in, in downtown. It can provide more opportunity for local small businesses. So I, I really have very few problems with this project. I mean, I wouldn't like to see, you know, five or 10 of them all along Lexington Highway, but these pockets of density near these commercial nodes, I think is appropriate.
Thanks, Commissioner Link. Going to move to Commissioner Myers, Davenport, and Wright.
Thanks, thanks. I want to thank Mariah for putting, Commissioner Parker, for putting so much work into this and, and for the, the developers for reaching out. But I also want to thank the, the, actually the neighbors who live right there as well, who actually are very thoughtful in what they're saying. And if you talk with them, they don't say, I don't want high density here. They don't say, they don't, they know there's going to be something different and they want there to be something that's different, that's a quality addition to the east side. And so there's a lot of support in this in terms of dealing with our college student population. I'm not sure this, well, the, the size of this is, is really large. This is something Commissioner Hamby was pointing out, and this is, has as much dan- density, as many students as the landmark downtown. And when thinking about this, I was, I was more willing to make some of these trade-offs if it was a smaller development, but this is such an impact on the east side. And I know there's been, I watched, I want to say I watched the planning commissioners, planning meeting, I talked to two planning commissioners, I talked to Brad Griffin, I talked to the neighbors, I walked the property. I have put a lot of thinking into this. This is not my district, but it is the east side and it's the geography of my life here. I know there's been reference to the wonderful, like the studies that the developers are incorporating in here, and I appreciate they're doing that. But I, I, I looked at those closely and, and this is a bit of a stretch. The Athens in Motion, which you guys all know, I know really well, is really about bikes and sidewalks. The corridor study is about transportation and the GIC study is about affordable housing needs in the whole community, which I agree we have to address. The only study here that really looks at the Lexington corridor is the Urban Land Institute. And I looked at that last night and it does go for higher density, which I am again supportive of. But the higher density here is something that they're talking about as, in terms of four different nodes. And I'm not saying we're committed to this because obviously this is not the plan for the future, but these four different nodes of density had to do with a wellness density, multi-age density node, a bike and brew, multifamily housing density, and, and all in an attempt to create a sense of place on the east side. And here we are making this mega development on the east side, which is a student housing development. I talked to one community member today who said to me, we need to think about where we want our high-density university housing. We need to make decisions about this. And in fact, if you look at the strategy to redevelop and revitalize the Lexington Road Corridor, it gives you the next steps in doing just exactly what it's talking about, visioning and thinking really upfront about what kind of, what we want the Lexington Corridor to be. And though I'm very, you know, I, I know this has to be developed and, and I, like the neighbors, are saying, I know there's going to be density in here, I need it to be thoughtful. If this was an affordable housing, and a, a mixed-income housing like we're having downtown, which we are also proud of, the, the one that's going downtown in the North Athens area, we'd have this intermingling of the market rate and the, the, the middle-income workhouse income and the lower income. This, we basically have a very, very, very large student development with segregated workforce housing in the front. And so I, I have some overall qualms about this. I could go on because I've spent way too much of the time thinking about it, or perhaps just the right amount of time. And addresses of the environmental concerns, the, the future. It's, it, the fact that it's going to be, as Commissioner Hool said, enough that we could have almost 1% of the population in here. The four EV charges are, are great, but that's a long way from the world that we're going to be living in 10 years from now. There are places in California and other parts of the country where there are new rulings with multifamily housing where you need to have one charger per seven. And I think we need to, and especially in such a large development, be preparing for that future. Anyway, I'm going to stop now because I've probably spoken more than my three minutes and let whoever's next in line speak.
Commissioner Davenport, did you want to weigh in?
Yes, I just got a quick question for Parker. And I put it in the chat, but like, the, the developer just mentioned that he has a, a contract that's ending on February 15th. And is that a hard deadline or can you elaborate more on that, that contract?
Um, I mean, if, if Mr. Smith is still in the building, I'll, I'll let him speak for himself on that if he would like.
So Bob Smith still in the chamber?
I am.
Hey, Mr. Smith. The question was about the prospective contract between the developer and the current property owner. Is, is that due to expire in February?
Yes, it's my understanding that, that that is a hard deadline and it is due to expire on the 15th.
Any other questions about this for Mr. Smith while he's up at the mic? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Commissioner Davenport, was that it or did you have some follow-up?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, I'm going to move forward to Commissioner Wright.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, I've, I've got concerns with all four of the waivers and some of the information in the report specifically that to move this to a mixed-density neighborhood. I think that the area around this is considered a traditional neighborhood and that they realize from what they've shared with me that its land won't go undeveloped, but that it being developed as a traditional neighborhood that matches the surrounding, there's an expectation, I think, that they have the right to expect. So I'm not in favor of moving it to the higher density of, of the mixed-density residential, which there's no other properties along this section of Lexington Road that has that, the density waiver that they want. The height waiver from 35 feet to 60 is a lot. The decreased parking. And so there's four waivers and then the buffer, I think that we shouldn't ignore the buffer waiver that they're looking for between the commercial and residential because in the mixed-density, you're supposed to have a good flow between the different types of commercial and residential. And I think not having that parking is not helping with that. So there's that. And then the idea of us not voting on it at a voting meeting has me concerned about the process and the transparency for the public that is, and this neighbor, this, the concerned neighbors who are trying to follow this and make sure their input is happening at the appropriate time. And so I hesitate to put it on a work session where we might not have the full commission and we definitely aren't going to have the public's opportunities that happen at the voting meeting for it. So I have concerns about that push not being stayed on the voting cycle as Brad had mentioned. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I just first want to commend Commissioner Parker, I think, for doing a pretty fantastic job of navigating these concerns with constituents and working with the developer to make sure that we have, you know, a project that delivers public goods and benefits. You know, a lot of the, a lot of the, the policy changes that we're asking for recommendations from the planning commission when it comes to density bonuses for inclusion of, no inclusionary zoning, those kind of things. I mean, this is similar to what we'd have once we have those policies in place. And it seems like this commission is very much so wanting- And it seems like this commission has very much so wanted those policies in place because we feel like that's what we need. And this project and the, and the process that Commissioner Parker has walked is extremely close to that. And we're giving, if this was the pass, we're giving basically a density bonus and getting, what was it, 66 workforce housing units, subsidized units, and plus possible more, plus some infrastructure put in place. I definitely understand the concerns about, like, no student housing. Where are we going to put student housing? What is our plan? Commissioner Link is definitely right. We can't, I mean, I hear complaints that, of people saying, like, all the, all the housing's downtown. And you hear complaints of, like, all the housing isn't downtown, should be downtown. I mean, honestly, it comes down to, after our student housing has spread out, and I do like that this is a bit of a, you know, a mixed kind of development, that we'd have workforce people living with students. I think that's the kind of communities that we want to be seeing, and I think that actually are pretty healthy, that build a diverse community. So with all of that, just like as Commissioner Parker brought up, just that we have time to make sure that we are making the right decision, that there's still a few things floating around here, a few concerns floating around, and so that Commissioner Parker has time to address two constituents who came and spoke, again, making sure that we had that teeth, and Commissioner Parker could explain to them how there is these legal, these legal obligations that were put into this, if we're to pass it. I will go ahead and second Commissioner Parker's motion for us to table this next week.
Thanks, Mr. Denson. See, Commissioner Edwards.
I'm good. I was just going to second it. Thanks.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Parker, I wanted to circle back to you.
Yeah, I just want to invite folks to, you know, if they do have questions or concerns, to let me know. I sent out an email on Friday and several prior, kind of informing folks of, like, where we were at in the process and what sorts of negotiations we're trying to enter into to ensure maximum community benefit. And I heard back from many folks in support. I appreciate hearing back from Commissioners Myers and Hul with their concerns. And so if, you know, we want to have a robust discussion around this in the weeks that come to see that our concerns are clarified, or if there's anything else we're looking for, to feel more confident in the project, that we can, you know, work together on those things. Thank you.
Kelly, I have a stick comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's probably more important to hear the concerns of the constituents around there. Certainly, 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 they were here tonight. They're evidently going to have to come back next week to say a few more words about it as well. This project is not near Walmart, as Commissioner Link has pointed out. This is across from the Sheriff's Department over there. So we probably ought to be looking at that as well. I mean, this is not, I mean, with this type of huge project, they would have to put up a red light anyway. If all, if all it's going to take is for developers to come to us and say, hey, we'll put up a red light, then, then, you know, I think a lot of developers are going to take us on that, on that opportunity. They're going to have to put up a sidewalk anyway. But, but I think, you know, for the sake of the residents, like Commissioner Wright said, you know, if this is going to be put on hold, it needs to be put at a regular meeting. You know, why are we concerned about a contract between a developer and, and, and somebody, both people are going to be making money off of this, the landowner and the developer. Why are we concerned about that? We should be concerned about, about making sure this is done right and making sure that the people who are directly impacted by this, that their voices are heard. So that's my two cents worth.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, any further input before I call for vote? Commissioner Myers and Hul.
I just want to put a couple of other points out there right now. When I was talking to some of the planning commission members and with the planning director, I was informed that they are going to be presenting something to us about just this kind of zoning change in the next, well, they were thinking it was at the next work session, I'm not sure when it's going to be, but that was going to address exactly the kind of questions that we're having here. I also thought, one of the commission, the planning commission members also sent me something last night, and I had really never thought about the effect of the housing stock. Well, I, I mean, I think about it, but the idea that if we're going to have more housing stock, it's going to help lower rents. And she actually sent me this little 10-minute excerpt from a PBS show about, actually, that might have been something else she sent me, but she sent me saying that, that there was a discussion among, from, I think, the planning department, how it doesn't work that way with the student housing. And if we're having more student housing, she had thought that it would help lower the rents across the community and was, learned that that was not the case. So that is something I'd like to, perhaps we could hear a little bit more about that between now and when we vote, from Brad Griffin. And the other thing I have here to myself is, I just want to clarify where we're talking about. We really, you know, Mike just moved us back to the police department. It's really about halfway between Carmike and Lowe's. And I do want to clarify something about the people who live on the street next to that.
It's across from the jail. It's near county, the county farm road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, which is actually kind of about halfway, if you look on the map here, and that, but it's, but also it's a very middle-class neighborhood. This is not, these are not large lots. These are very, this is very moderate housing that we're talking about on this street. We are not talking about wealthy people. We're talking about middle-income people in Athens right now. So this, this is not a fancy neighborhood by any means here. Anyway, those are just two points I wanted to, a couple of points I wanted to put out there and make sure that they were there. I'm really interested to see what the planning commission brings us and what their work plan is in terms of addressing issues like we're discussing. I value their expertise as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Myers. And just a note on the work plan of the planning department. We should be talking about that next Friday, the second day of the retreat. Commissioner Hul.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and echoing that, which I'm really looking forward to that conversation, just for the benefit of the public, there's a sustainable building policy that we've been kicking around in Legislative Review Committee that should be coming before this body soon too. So hopefully we will make some headway on some of these bigger policies that we need. But I, you know, I guess I want to be mindful of the fact that we don't have those yet. And so what people have brought forward to us has required these discussions to get, you know, any of this kind of stuff. And I think those discussions have been quite robust up to this point. It's just that we're not, you know, to the finish line yet. I, I share a lot of Commissioner Hamby's concerns, but I don't think it's fair to say that all we've got is a stoplight. I think that the CDO that Commissioner Parker is putting forward includes a lot of different components that can provide real benefit to the community, generally, including future residents of, of the development, but also outside of it. So I guess just for the benefit of everyone here, the three things I'm looking to dig into before we vote on this more is the contract with the land trust to ensure that affordable component and see if it does have the teeth that it needs. The interaction of this with TADS, you know, TADS is a brand-new thing, and I feel like that's a key component of what makes this seem even more appealing, but it's not clear to me that we even have a consensus on this body about how we want to use TAD money and whether this would be a good use. Never mind, you know, whether we can be assured that the money actually would be used, even if we did want to use this way, if we're deciding on this first. And then third is the concerns raised by the neighboring residents. I think that's important to take seriously. I know that they've reached out to all of us and offered, I know they invited me to come by and take a look at the area, so I'm going to try to do that between now and when we vote, which I guess will be the next few days. But, yeah, I mean, might be worth just hearing more of an explanation of how the development is going to address some of those concerns that they've raised tonight as well. That I'm in favor of a hold, so thanks.
Any further comments before I ask for a roll call? All right, Madam Clerk, I've got a motion from Commissioner Parker and a second from Commissioner Denson. Go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Parker?
Yes.
Link?
Here, yes.
Wright?
No.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Thornton? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I have an emergency. I'm going to have to step away. I don't even know what the motion is on the floor. What was the motion?
Motion is to hold for a week.
Oh. And then after that week, and I am going to have to excuse myself, but after that week, what happens?
We would vote next week.
The only thing I would like to say before I make the vote, and again, I'm sorry, I hope that, and Commissioner Parker did a great job working with the developers, but I hope within that week, there's, what she's been sharing with us, she was sharing with her constituents. So yes, yes, okay.
Yes. Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
Yes.
A yes, two no.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion carries, so we'll see this in a week. We're going to move forward to item number six, which is 990 and 1040 Highway 29.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
With respect to this item, there actually are two ordinance associated with this zoning matter. The first ordinance is with respect to amend the conditions of zoning associated with three parcels. The second ordinance is with, with respect to the special use ordinance required for this, this item, and then there is a variance within the special use ordinance. Would you like for me to read those now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, the first one is an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending conditions of zoning associated with three parcels of land comprising approximately 21.64 acres in total and located at 990 and 1040 U.S. Highway 29 North in the CG Commercial General with the Conditions of Zoning District and for other purposes. The second ordinance is an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to approval of special use permit in the CG Commercial General zoning with Conditions District for one parcel of land and portions of two other parcels of land located at 990 and 1040 U.S. Highway 29 North comprising approximately 21.64 acres in total and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. Is there any input in the chamber on this item?
Good evening, I'm Brett Thurman. I work for Armored Truck McTheeny Thurmond, and I represent the owners of the properties that are proposed to be developed as a multifamily development here. I want to thank you and thank all the commissioners I was able to discuss with the issues surrounding this project over the last several months. We met with a number of them on Zoom or on phone calls, and I appreciate the time they took. I feel like the particular special use we're asking for is to allow us for the ground floor residential, so that there's no commercial in this CG zone property area. The places of the multifamily are very close, we're just north of the Kroger Shopping Center at the Highway 29 and Hull Road area. The, we're also very near the Boils Road industrial area. This, this whole concept plan and development has been always resolved, revolved around workforce housing, which goes down to about 60% of the median family income in Clark County. We, we feel like the, the project is well-suited here due to the closeness of the Kroger Shopping Center. It's very near. It involves a public road extension, which has full sidewalks on both sides of it, as well as an improvement of the private drive that runs down from, parallel to Highway 29 on the east side down to Kroger, and we have a sidewalk planned for there as well. There's already a bus stop pad showing on that road, and I shared that with a number of commissioners in an email to show that the work has been done to make this a walkable community from the, from the multifamily down to the commercial shopping areas. The, as a matter of fact, we submitted those plans for the, for the public road today, as well as some initial grading involved in that on the other parcel, so that we're prepared to move forward once we get our approval with the development and on the public road as quickly as we can. The, the other parts of the project that we feel are important is that, that the, it is housing that is developed for the area residents who we feel are going to, this area is going to grow in terms of jobs, and they're going to need some housing nearby to support some of these people, so we can bring people in locally to Athens rather than keeping this area right now. It's more of a drive-by area. I know there's a lot of residents in Athens who come that way, but a lot of out-of-county residents stop in and shop here, coming in or leaving town. And even though that's some, some dollars here, we want to keep some, some area open here for full residents to help the commercial area continue to grow and develop as a vibrant commercial and residential area. And I'll leave it to you now and hope that you will vote favorably for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thurman. Is there any other input in the chamber on this matter, on Highway 29?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Thornton, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you. I did have some concerns and questions, but I think all of them have been answered. I think this is a good project for my, my district. Most of you know that the 29 corridor is, is, is just growing organically. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine, and I'll make a motion that we approve this project.
I'll second it.
Any further commission input on this project? All right, I've got a motion from, I, I think we do need two motions. Is that correct, Attorney Drake? So Commissioner Thornton, can you make a motion to amend the CG zoning with the special use?
I make a motion to amend the CG amendment with the special.
And a second from Commissioner Link?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then the second is the amendment to the CG with conditions.
A motion with the amendment, CG with.
I'll second it.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. All right, we are moving on to item number seven, and this regards 7.2 acres at 175 Tracy Street. Is there any public input in the chamber on this item?
Hi, I'm Brett Nave, Studio BNA Architects here in Athens. And just want to say, I only have a few minutes here, but we think this is a really exciting addition to a transitioning neighborhood area, a transitioning part of Athens. I think that bringing a few people, all one-bedroom, almost all one-bedrooms, I think there's 66 one-bedrooms and 22 two-bedrooms, designed specifically for that, that workforce, maybe even empty nesters-type of folks. We're, we're looking at an old mill-building vibe, a lot of park space, a lot of green space. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things since I only have a few minutes, and I'm still here for questions. One of the things that's, that's important here, well, I guess there's maybe three things. It's, it's the park space and the green space, the workforce housing, and then accommodating the Greenway master plan that moves right through this, it's planned right through this property, and we pretty much follow that path. With regards to workforce housing, we're set up, again, with almost all, I think it's 75, 76% of one-bedroom apartments, and they're all kind of big and lofty. They have 12-foot ceilings and big mill-building-type windows and just kind of cool little spaces. We're doing some commercial along Tracy Street. I believe there's about 11,000 square feet total in the project. But for workforce housing, we're definitely able to allocate, offer a little over 10%, so nine of the one-bedroom apartments. And the math that we do, looks like they land in about the, right at 90, 91% AMI, so right in the middle of workforce, 80 to 100. And interestingly, the rents, as far as I'm, I understand on this project, all 66 of those one-bedroom apartments are in that price range. So in effect, 76% of the- So, in effect, 76% of this is, falls in the 90% uh, AMI. So kind of excited to be able to say that. And with regards to, um, oh, and we, of course, will be, uh, giving Heather at the Land Trust a call as we have on the previous projects, like the most recently finished Mathis and Five Points and the upcoming Baldwin. Uh, we worked really well with her, and, and, uh, I think we'd follow the same path that we followed on those projects with her. Um, with regards to improvements along that stream, you know, there's 400 feet of existing pipe from way back, don't know when, 30-plus years ago. And, uh, much of the property, I think it's about two and a half acres, on the, each side of that, uh, piped area is, is a stream. It's kind of filled with invasive species that could do, but there's also, uh, like nine or 10 or so really nice trees. So the idea there is we're cleaning all of that up, uh, replanting with native species, uh, revegetating, adding trees, and creating park space there, and it passes right through, kind of makes an X. It passes, uh, left or right on the plan you're looking at, and then the o- opposite direction, we're connecting the Greenway master plan through. And right at the intersection of that, we're creating this little outdoor plaza with some, the idea is little kiosk-style startup spaces. Um, there's a huge need for all the creative entrepreneurs here, little restaurants, uh, crafts, arts, there's a huge need for that. So we're putting five or six little kiosks and an outdoor plaza, picking up a lot of outdoor amenity, um, manaring trails through this green space as well.
Thank you, Mr. Nave.
And we're bringing the multimodal through and probably some other things, but.
Appreciate it. Uh, further public input in the chamber on this project on Tracy Street?
I know there's not.
All right, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Commissioner Link.
Yeah, um, I think Mr. Nave did a pretty good job of summing up all the, um, the amenities worked into this project. It does have a substantial amount of workforce units, not only ones that are, you know, set aside particularly as workforce, but apparently, um, you know, the general price point is, is gonna come within that AMI range, um, for, for those one-bedroom units. Um, so, you know, I think this will bring some diverse housing to the community. It's right across the railroad tracks from Boulevard Neighborhood. There, um, they, they have met with folks from the Boulevard Neighborhood Association, and there is, is, I, I've heard absolutely no objection to the project. Um, the main concern is the opportunity for collaboration with these developers and other surrounding businesses to, um, pressure for a quiet zone along the railroad line to get that, that train to stop blowing its horn and get some properly, um, proper gates on all the crossings for, to increase safety as well as, you know, get rid of the noise pollution. Um, I think this is a really fun project, and it, it kind of like, um, extends the vibe that's going on over there at Chase Street Warehouses, um, you know, and it, it brings these little entrepreneurial spaces in, and it adheres to our Greenway Network Plan. We're getting some actual Greenway Trail out of this, um, that'll provide some connectivity from the Boulevard Neighborhood into, um, Pulaski and, and, you know, near that Pulaski Trail. Um, so, I mean, there's a lot, a lot to like about this project, and, and I'm gonna, um, propose that, that we accept it.
I'll second.
All right, uh, Com- uh, Attorney Drake, can you read the ordinance for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An, an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning a parcel of land comprising approximately 7.20 acres located 175 Tracy Street from E.I. Employment Industrial to E.O.P.D. Employment Office Plan Development and for other purposes.
Thanks, Judd. I've got a motion from Commissioner Link and a second from Commissioner Parker. Further input on this item? Uh, Commissioner Hool and then Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, uh, oh, I guess I'll preface this by saying that I plan to, uh, vote in favor of this, I believe. Um, and it seems pretty cool overall. I think the point about some of these units, a large number of these units coming in within that affordable range is, uh, kind of pushed me over the top here, because I think that's a, a thing we need to hold at the forefront, um, when, whenever we have a chance to leverage these kinds of applications. Uh, I am curious, you know, this originally came forward with the recommendation to deny by staff, but then the planning commission was in support. And, uh, I was just curious if anyone had anything new to share, um, since the agenda-setting meeting regarding the impact this might have on the industrially zoned area that's immediately across the street, and/or if we have any plan for having more of a, a robust discussion around that area in the near future? It's okay if not, I guess, I'm just.
I, I don't know if there's any update.
Okay. Um, but I'd, I'd welcome that if anybody had any new thoughts on that. And I guess I, I would just echo something that was already said in the agenda-setting meeting, which is that I think it would be good for us to maybe try to take a proactive look at some of that adjacent area. Since we're, since we're approving this now, and that kind of changes the landscape of, of what's planned for there, but that's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, sort of thank all the work that went into this. I think this is a really creative, interesting example of infill development that addresses, uh, you know, a, a need for, um, moderate housing, um, and, uh, cost housing. Um, we'll see how that develops as the market changes. And I really, the integration of the, the multi-use trail and the Greenway through here, I think, is excellent. Uh, I think we're gonna see more and more people using our, um, Greenways like I do as a transportation corridors to get from one place to the other, and this, this really helps it out. And, and, um, I also really appreciate, I'm, I'm looking here at the, uh, proposal here, the way that this really contributes to a sense of place for that area. Um, a creative, interesting, active, green sense of place. And so I, I really like this, and I'm gonna be supporting it as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input on this item? All right, I've got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Link, and a second from Commissioner Parker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, um, we are going to, uh, stay on the line as a body and, um, uh, move into executive session. Uh, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion from the.
You've got one more there.
Oh, oh, I apologize. Ta-da. Yeah, I, I can't forget the drive-through liquor store, um, you know.
Yeah, you can't be.
How did I overlook that? Um, uh, so, uh, item number eight, bottom of my page, is a, uh, amendment to a CN property at 106 Talassee Road. Is there anyone in the chamber to speak to this item? They're already lined up on Talassee Road. Go right ahead.
I'm glad you didn't forget me. Uh, my name is Charlie Armentraut. Uh, I live at I-96 Brooklyn Parkway in Athens Clark County. Um, 2017, my client, uh, I, I brought this to you for a drive-through at this liquor store, which was under construction at the time, and it, the drive-through required a special use permit. And part of that special use permit included a binding site plan. Uh, my client's, uh, needing to expand some, for some storage, not for retail, but for storage of his, uh, for his business on the back of the facility. And because it's a binding site plan, I'm back before you tonight to ask you to amend the site plan to allow him to do this. This project does not affect the riparian buffer, uh, for the string that crosses the property. It doesn't add any, um, parking. It adds a, it's a very, very small amount of impervious area, and frankly, uh, it's a lot simpler than all the other items you've been discussing tonight. I'm asking you to consider approval, and I'll be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Armentraut. I appreciate it. Any further input in the chamber on this item?
I don't know what's here.
All right, um, go ahead and turn it over to you, Commissioner Denson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And like Mr. Armentraut said, this is a pretty simple one. Just a, uh, amendment to special use permit so they can add storage facility and a trash facility. Uh, so I'll go ahead and make a motion for us, uh.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could read the ordinance?
Thank you, Attorney Drake.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to special use approval in the CN Commercial Neighborhood District for an approximate 1.04 acre parcel of land located 106 Talassee Road and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson and a second from Commissioner Hool. Is there any further input from commissioners on this item? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, uh, to entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Some move.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright, and my second from Commissioner Denson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so for members of the public, we are gonna go dark for about an hour, and, uh, come on back with our consent agenda and all the new business. All right, now just, uh, wait for public information to let us know when we are in the chamber.
...
All right, welcome back, everybody. It is nine thirty-five on the second of February twenty twenty-one. And the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commissioner here with our consent agenda. Old business and new business. I do want to make a quick note that item number twenty-three, the Act on Services and Equipment Contract Extension, has been removed from this agenda and we will revisit this item in the next couple of weeks. So we have first the consent agenda as previously reviewed at Agenda Setting Meeting by myself and the full commission. And those are items number nine through twenty. Would any commissioner like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Um, I'd like to remove, wait, am I muted?
No, we can hear you.
Nice, yeah. Um, could I remove item number nineteen for some quick questions?
Okay. All right. Any other item that somebody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Go ahead, Jesse.
Uh, can I pull twelve and eighteen for quick questions as well?
Okay. All right. All right, so I've got twelve, eighteen, and nineteen. Anything else going once?
Yeah, wait, wait, why don't we pull seventeen? I'm approving it, but I do want to make a statement. I do want to follow up on something.
Okay, all right. All right, so what we have then for a consent agenda prior to discussion nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and twenty. Do I hear a motion for approval of those items with a single vote?
Mr. Mayor, there's ordinances. Can I read those nine, ten, and eleven have ordinances?
Thank you for that, Jed. Go right ahead.
In ordinance number nine, in ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to farmers' market hours of operations and for other purposes. Number ten, in ordinance to amend the FY two thousand twenty-one annual operating and capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia. Swiss revive funding for district attorney supplemental pay and for other purposes. And number eleven, in ordinance to amend the FY two thousand twenty-one annual operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia. So as for about funding for expenses related to critical systems replacements at the E nine oh one command center from capital contingency and for other purposes.
Great, I appreciate that, Jed. Thank you for that. All right, is there a motion for approval of those items?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright and a second from Commissioner Denson for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. All right, we're going to move on to discussion items then, beginning with number twelve, which is the proposal to waive sidewalk cafe fees for twenty twenty-one. Go right ahead, Jesse.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of quick questions for Manager Williams, kind of following up on discussion at the agenda setting. I've been talking to some folks in the service industry and just wanted to make sure we talked about this publicly so it was clear for everybody. Um, we are talking about calendar year twenty twenty-one for waiving these fees. Is that correct? So this vote would keep the fees waived through the end of the year and then they kick back in January first unless we took further action.
I think Blaine's muted.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, that is correct.
Um, and then this is also just kind of echoing what we covered in email. But could you just share briefly the effects this will have or rather not have on the special events?
Yes, um, the, uh, give me one second here. A question that we got was, um, you know, will this play into fees that vendors get charged like for Twilight, et cetera? And vendors are not charged for event participation, but we do charge for beer gardens, but not vendors or food trucks. And the impact of foregoing this is about fifteen thousand dollars that would be applicable to a loss of revenue for FY twenty-one. So no impacts on special events or vendors. Um, and we would expect any new sidewalk permit, cafe permits from, you know, would obviously have to adhere to the policy.
Okay, thanks. That'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. All right, I've got a motion to approve from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Link. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item number seventeen, uh, which is approval of the professional design and construction administrative services contract. Go ahead, Carol.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on here that, um, I just want to make it known that, that Paul Kramer has sort of reached out with to me and gotten one of his consultants that's worked on sustainability has reached out to me so that we're like continuing to push for as much sustainability in the arena design as possible. Um, and I'm really glad of that, along with the, um, the designers who have a lot of background in this kind of, um, project and pushing the envelope on green infrastructure, a green building structure. Um, anyway, I appreciate that and just wanted to make that comment public.
Thanks for that, Commissioner Myers. Any further input on that item? Entertain the motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, eighteen is approved. All right, uh, eighteen is the Rock and Shoals Natural Area Conservation Easement. Go ahead, Jesse.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, this is also just for the benefit of the public. We got some questions after our agenda setting meeting. And so manager Williams, if you could just share what kind of access the public will have to this tract if we pass this and what kind of activities would be permitted in that light use?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So as y'all know, uh, the public currently has pedestrian access to the Rock and Shoals natural area. And if the, if you pass this conservation easement, the access would continue. Uh, and, and the activities that are allowed under conservation easement are generally permitted under other green space properties. And that includes pedestrian access, bridges, stairs, that type of thing. Restroom and trailhead amenities, signage, educational activities, research activities, land management activities, things of that nature. Now, you know, conservation easements are site specific. And, um, you know, it, it helps to refine the scope and the activities there. So you further investigate those site conditions as a part of the, um, conservation easement. Uh, you know, to, to, uh, verify, validate, identify, you know, where the ecologically sensitive areas are and try to route trails around those if possible. You know, protecting sensitive breeding grounds, things of that nature. Uh, how you locate some of this infrastructure that I mentioned earlier, that it's not in ecologically sensitive areas. So there are general, um, access and usage of conservation easements that are allowed. And then some further, uh, investigation will recommend where those types of things are best suited on the property.
Thank you, manager. And just, uh, one follow-up, would this do anything to restrict people's hours of access to the site for walking like that?
No, but I would say that, uh, you know, that the access to the property, uh, a lot of folks currently avail themselves down a dead-end street that goes through a neighborhood. And, you know, there's, uh, you've got to consider those folks and then how we access the property. Those are things that really need to be worked through, quite frankly. Um, you know, the types of things that go on out there, uh, you know, having dogs off their leash, you know, running through the areas, uh, you know, that's not a good thing. Uh, so I say all that to say, Commissioner Hul, that, that there, there aren't any restrictions right now, but we may want to consider how the property is used, hours, types of activities out there. Uh, you know, not necessarily restricting anything I've said here, but there are other things going on beyond this that we might want to begin to curtail.
Okay, and if we were going to have that discussion, would that come before the commissioners? Does something leisure services would just kind of do?
It's something that leisure services and the sustainability, uh, office would, would help to coordinate because we, you know, we're fortunate and the leadership of the previous mayor and commissions, we've acquired some, you know, pretty incredible green space here to meet that twenty percent goal. Uh, and now, and then, and the mayor and I have talked about this as well as with leisure service and sustainability, I would suggest to y'all in the budget that we consider some type of broader community discussion and plan for these green space properties, including, you know, Rock and Shoals. Uh, and just next door to it, the Cedar Creek, uh, water reclamation facility has a significant acreage. And, um, you know, so there's a lot of this to talk about. We have advocacy groups approach us and say, well, we want to do this here. And then that might run counter to another group that wants to use it for a different purpose. And, and I see you, Commissioner Hul agreeing because this is, this is kind of a microcosm and this is happening in Beach Haven. And so, you know, uh, Beach Haven has its own trajectory, so I don't want to confuse any of you by this. Um, I think this is SPOS twenty twenty project and some of that first money is meant for a master plan specific to there. But for the remaining properties, I think that, uh, it's time to bring these advocacy groups together in full view of you and the public and talk about how we protect and use, best use these properties across the county. And so that could be something we could all work on next year if funded.
Yeah. Tim?
Thank you. Um, and, and Blaine, I would, uh, recommend again, if we can get staff to organize another site visit there. I know me and Commissioner Davenport got to walk the, the property. And I am glad we're putting a conservation easement on there because it was some of the most unique ecological, uh, land that I've seen in Athens Clark County. It was, it was pretty amazing. And definitely you see everywhere, uh, things you don't see anywhere else in Athens. So it definitely, we definitely needed a conservation there, although also a plan to kind of regulate visitors there. But I think it'd be great if we had another, uh, visit for the commission. I'd like to go again.
And I want to make sure I didn't stray away from directly answering Commissioner Hul. Um, I think that, uh, any additional, uh, planning for the property doesn't necessarily call for mayor and commission approval, but we could certainly, uh, pay, uh, reference that as we go through a bigger discussion of the entire, you know, all the other green space properties as well. So, um, I don't think doing this tonight is going to preempt anything that, I mean, it's surrounded on, on other sides by conservation easement and it's sort of hand in glove with the use of the property, so.
And I'll note that as we move into budget preparation, I'm really favorable toward the sort of global view so we can have a matrix and identify that this conservation property bears these unique features like, um, Tim has just outlined at Rock and Shoals or certainly as you see in the Tallahassee Forest in some areas there, you know, whereas some of the other, um, open spaces or, um, natural areas, you know, have some particular viability for trails, horse activity, other things. So, um, anyhow, definitely eager for that conversation.
Commissioner Denson, uh, we'll work with Clerk Spratlin to schedule that tour.
Uh, yeah, follow.
Yeah, uh, so I would love the idea of that bigger discussion. And I guess I would just ask that we, um, try to keep in full view of the public, anything we do that would like further restrict access in the meantime. Because I'd like to think that while we're working on that big picture view, we can still, I, I just, I got a lot of calls and I'm sure I'm not the only not the only one and probably got less than the people who actually represent districts on it or closer to it about people, people misunderstanding and thinking they would suddenly not be able to go there at all anymore or something. So just want to make sure that we're on the record and clarifying that's not the case. But I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Parker. Any further input? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, motion is approved. All right, moving on to item number 19, the sewer connection agreement with the Hallmark Mobile Home Park. Go ahead, Commissioner Parker.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the aftermath of the very tragic fire at the Hallmark Mobile Home Community last Wednesday, I had a lot of conversations with constituents about how that situation came to pass. And in discussions with Manager Williams, understanding more about why there, I promise this all makes sense in a second, about why there is only one fire hydrant in the, in the community. And so in those discussions with constituents, the question came up a lot of like these, you know, promises made in the era of unification that haven't, you know, all been made good on. And in rereading this agenda item, coming across particularly, I think back, history item number one, that it's part of the original service delivery plan approved by the Mayor and Commission in 1995, it was in response to that unification charter requirement that water and wastewater should be provided to all Athens Clark Counties. So I am really glad that we're moving ahead with getting Hallmark connected to our sewer system through this. But I wanted to use this opportunity to ask if the, if they had been approached about being connected to our water, which would then, you know, enable us to address the issue of like the fire hydrant issue in the community that some folks in the aftermath of that tragedy have been kind of concerned about.
My understanding is that Hallmark is on a well. And I know, and Commissioner Parker, and Hallmark is a privately owned development. So they have their own private water system in there. And certainly bringing, you know, talking about the sewer could also prompt, you know, a discussion of water lines in there as well.
But they haven't been approached by public utilities about the opportunity for them to switch from private to public water.
Well, I mean, the water main is right at the entrance to the property. So typically, you know, developers can, you know, but no, we have not, for private developments that are not on county water, I don't think we're actively marketing all of them. I think that in this particular case, this was discussed with the owner at some point in the past.
That'd be, that'd be a big expense for them, wouldn't it, Manager Williams, to tie into that stub and then create infrastructure to tie in all those mobile homes?
Well, I'm not sure the status of the current water system. They are on a well and they do provide, but we do think it would cost a great deal of money. Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to use this opportunity to kind of clarify like how these processes move forward with be both water and wastewater treatment being, you know, a part of that package of requirements under the charter back in, back in the 90s. And so, you know, here it says that I guess we approached the owners about joining our, pursuing connection to the sanitary sewer back in 2020. And then we are, to my understanding, waiving, so we're waiving the sewer connection fees. That's correct?
Yes, in the interest of water quality, you know, in the, in the environment. And if y'all remember too, and for the benefit of the viewing public, there were two other trailer parks with similar wastewater lagoons on the north side that emptied into Trail Creek that we felt like if we could get them onto public sewer, that would be a benefit to the county in terms of water quality. And so this is a similar, this was the auspices under which we approached the owners trying to work something out.
Okay. Is there ever a scenario in which we waive water connection fees if it could be argued as in this is, maybe it's a matter of public safety that folks have access to, like a fire hydrant in the vicinity of the property?
There is a policy that governs, I think it's, it says, you know, I think environmental or economic or there are some things that we could look at there with regards to water connection. I do know that to Commissioner Edward's point, on the very subject of the hydrants, you know, rather than just the probably smaller diameter lines that they have for conveying drinking water, for fire flows where you really need all that, that would be pretty much a wholesale replacement of whatever water system they have in order to have hydrants in there. That would be very expensive.
Cool. Yeah, I just thought for the viewing public, it would be good to understand, just take advantage of this opportunity. But I think Commissioner Link might have had a question.
Good, Commissioner Link.
I'm just, I'm curious about our current codes when it comes to the providence of fire hydrants within a public, a private development, you know, a mobile home or multifamily apartment town development where you do have completely private infrastructure and private streets, private water lines, private sewer lines. Is there anything in our code that requires hydrants every certain number of feet within those private developments?
In a private development, I don't think so. I was talking about this with PUD Director Stevens, and it goes way back. If it's a private system, I'm not sure that that's required by our public utilities departments.
I mean, could we pass an ordinance? I mean, I would think it would, it would be passed within the planning code to require those hydrants spaced properly as they're required in regular neighborhoods. There's one in front of my next door neighbor's house and there's one on the corner in front of my other next door neighbor's house on my street.
They're absolutely required for developments that will be turned over to the public. So y'all have seen where we accept streets and roads, you know, after being on maintenance. So if you were to build a subdivision as a developer and you wanted us to ultimately take over the water, the sewer, the roads and that type of thing, then we do have specs that you have to build to. And then we have to verify that you've built them and you give it to us in good, good, you know, and obviously good order. And then we take that over for public maintenance.
But there are no requirements if those streets are going to remain private streets?
I don't believe so. Well, and I'm talking about public utilities. I would need to check the fire marshal. But if y'all would allow me to research that for you, I'll give you.
I'd love to get some of that info. And I think Judd might maybe have some input if there are any, if there are state laws or codes that prevent or be able to pass some of those codes.
Certainly, it's a question that lots of communities would have to contemplate, given the kind of frequency even among our neighboring counties of having private infrastructure in a, you know, fairly large multifamily or trailer community. So, Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to piggyback a little bit on Commissioner Link and Commissioner Parker's comments. Blaine, and I know putting you in spots, if you don't know, if you just get to us, do you know with that tragic fire that was there, is there being an investigation being done into that fire? Mainly I ask because I mean, I've gotten complaints. I know Commissioner Parker has gotten complaints about quality of some of the things there and some safety issues in the past. And so, you know, just want to, want to see if there's been an investigation into that to make sure the mobile home was up the, up the par and up the code and such.
I do know that there was an investigation from the cause of the fire. I don't know about the condition of the, the structure. There may be some research as part of that. I can certainly find out more about that. And I think if I might, with Commissioner Link's question, you know, that was one of the questions, was, was the, was it deficient there? You know, did it cause this? And, you know, that, that mobile home park has been there for some time. So it really predated, you know, current code. So Commissioner Link, you know, if you had a new private development, there could very well be the fire marshal rules that require hydrants in there. But these older mobile home parks predate that. And so there, there's not a requirement for them to retrofit for those purposes, if that makes sense. But I will, Commissioner Denson, I will talk further with the fire marshal and we'll give you a better update on, on the investigation and, and some of the things that they found.
Okay. And if there's any kind of policy, other studies have done to, to fix that possible problem with having older mobile homes that aren't under regulation, because I think we want to make sure that we can do whatever we can and make sure that doesn't happen again.
This is Vida. I need, I wanted to say something briefly. I think this was tragic and we're always, you know, but my point is this, one of the concerns, and I think Tim alluded to it, is that some of the people who even talk about the deficiencies, they're there because there's no place else to go. And they take the risk because there's no place else to go. And I would like to think that we have a conversation with the owner of the trailer park and see what we can do to support what kind of uplift we can give them. Commissioner Edwards talked about how expensive it would be. If this owner decided tomorrow that he just didn't want to go and do no, nothing and shut it down, well, it's going to be expensive for folk to go and try to find a place to live. I think we need to start building these relationships. We're always talking about private and public partnerships. We need to be building some relationships to see what's needed, where we can help at legally and develop those policies. Because it's more expensive if people are uprooted because he could do that and build a major student complex there. Or what is more expensive is people losing their lives. So I would, I would have liked to have heard a conversation or an outreach with the owner just to talk about what the needs are and how we can help improve the situation out there without displacing. I drove out there. I drove out there and I saw where, I saw where the fire hydrants are. They're, and you're right, they're on our property. Nine of them, back to back. So I think that while we're talking about stuff, we got to take into consideration the residents over there. This is a businessman. He's trying to do business and we're the government. But how can we develop these private, public partnerships that we keep saying that's what we're trying to do? But we don't need to put these folk at risk unless we have someplace to move them to.
Further input or motion?
I want to, my motion that we approve, and I just want to thank you all for allowing us a few minutes to discuss this very important issue that, you know, it's impacted a lot of people in my district. And I think it, you know, merits a moment for us to, you know, seriously consider what sorts of reforms need to come forward to ensure that this kind of thing doesn't happen again. So thank you for your time, everybody, on, on the call tonight.
I'll second.
Motion from Commissioner Parker, second from Commissioner Link. And Blaine, thanks to you and staff for doing a little bit of background research to determine where we may be able to go, not only for this community, but so many others in Clark County that are comparable. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we are moving on to old business. Item number 21 is TSPLOST 2018 Project 12, the Pedestrian Improvement Program pertaining to the Cherokee Road Sidewalk Improvement. Some conversation about this pertinent to the prospect of a tax allocation district investment within this TAD zone. I don't know if it's the appetite for commission to hold this for some, for some modest period of time as a result, if you want to move forward with it as it exists.
I move to hold.
I'll, I'll second.
Right, motion from Commissioner Davenport to hold, second from Commissioner Link. Any other comment?
Yes, this is Allison. Hold on. What are we holding it for? So that we can define what TAD help can happen for it?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Because that was one of my concerns with the earlier project on Lexington Road that got held for a week or so, was that we were doing tax allocation appropriations without having that Citizens Advisory Committee that we established should happen for each of those. So do we have a timeline for this hold?
This one, I mean, should we, should we contemplate use of tax allocation district dollars? Would have to be certainly pending the development of that, of that committee I've discussed with Manager Williams, sort of using this as the initial citizen engagement committee so that we can get our feet wet.
Okay.
Figure out how we're able to kind of integrate it with this body as the formal and legal redevelopment authority.
Okay. I think that's a great idea because we need to get that going so we're ready. And this does sound like a perfect one for it. Thanks for clarifying that.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, which one, which item are we holding? 21, 21, okay.
Well, if I might, and I don't mean to get in front of Commissioner Myers, sorry.
Oh, okay. You're letting me go in front, right? Okay. I support holding this as well and looking into that TAD funding. I think that's really important to do. You know, if you look at the item, half of the money is coming, this is originally a sidewalk project. And I'm saying this as much for the public watching it. And the commission voted last year to, to put a multi-use path here, which I'm hoping will work out and will tie into other multi-use paths. In my role on, previous role in Athens in motion, we, we, we suggested only putting a sidewalk here. One of the consequences of us going into these multi-use paths is that we've actually used up all the TSPLOST money in the bike bucket. And so there were five original that team plan had suggested for the bikes. And we've only, will have gotten through one, and that's on the Barber Street, which we haven't even discussed yet. So the idea of taking some of the money from the TAD, potentially using that would be a wonderful, because we'd free up some money for projects in other places in the community. So I think that's a smart move.
Go ahead, Blaine, and then I'll trickle back to Patrick.
Okay, sorry. Well, I was just going to say, you know, these things take time. And I don't know if you want to go ahead and fund the design because it seemed like the commission liked the idea of the project and you could be that much further down the road. That's about $285,000. Or you can just hold it. And Commissioner Myers, I appreciate you clarifying that. Didn't know if y'all wanted to have a placeholder for these funds or you want to go ahead and dedicate these funds for other projects and come back at the TSPLOST. But what you could do is if you want to keep the project moving towards fruition, you could go ahead and agree to do the design and then hold the construction funding for discussion with the TAD. Or you could just hold the whole thing if you think that the project may not get done ultimately.
Commissioner Davenport, would you want to amend your motion to fund that approximately $200,000 for design?
Yes. So, and I did want to make a comment that that was one of the, the envision that Commissioner Harret and I had asked why we added this to the TAD. And the first one, this, this stretch of road was not added, was not originally a part of the TAD. But our envision was that we can use TAD's fund to have, TAD's fund, excuse me, to help build out this project. But yes, I agree that we should add.
I'll, I'll second that.
Patrick, you went mute there very toward the end of your sentence. Did you want to go ahead and follow up?
Yeah, I said, I agree with amendment to, for what you said.
To, to fund design.
That's approximately $285,000. And just sort of true to the funding split between the two buckets, we just split that 50/50 with the, the bike and the ped. And, you know, the remaining funds then could be, as Commissioner Myers pointed out, available for your allocation in the future. And then we can have the TAD discussions, let the design move forward while the committee starts to deliberate. And then they could give you some. I think we talked about, the advisory committee could help identify potential projects and give you some recommendations on priority. This could be one of them.
Right. Thanks, Blaine. Further input? I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, second from Commissioner Link, to simply fund the design co-funded by those two buckets and hold construction dollars. All in favor? Any, any opposed? All right, we're moving on to item number 22, the SPOST 2020 program, project tier funding schedule. There, of course, is a commission-defined option on this. I'd certainly be glad to begin with anybody. Commissioner Hool?
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty excited about this commission-defined option. Since it's a long meeting, I'll avoid repeating myself too much, but just for the benefit of the public, there's a commission-defined option that modifies the tiering ever so slightly to bump up that mental health recovery facility into this upcoming fiscal year. So we can have it right up there in tier two. And so if I can get my windows straight here to make sure I'm reading the correct thing aloud, I'd like to make a motion to approve the CDO version of the 12-year tier funding schedule for the SPOST 2020 program, which relates to Attachment 2. For everybody who's wondering what that is, it's the spreadsheet. And that commission-defined option is co-sponsored by Commissioners Davenport, Denson, and Myers.
Second. And thank you all for putting this together. I think this is going to bring a lot of value to our community, particularly as we try to invest more in preventative supports for people with behavioral issues in lieu of incarcerating them on the back end. I think this very much in line with that going to work. So I appreciate you all so much for figuring a way to make that happen in the grand scheme of things.
Thanks, Commissioner. I've still got a motion from Commissioner Hool and a second from Commissioner Parker. Further input? Commissioner Myers?
Just for the public as well, if, if you moved on my screen, Manager Williams, to a different box, but I believe in the discussion of this, I think it's really important to know that, that actually even moving this forward is not significantly changing the placement of any other projects as well, nor creating more debt or putting us in the red at different parts. And is that correct?
Yes, it is. It was already towards the front. When you move something very large way up through the years, that tends to really impact things. It did increase the deficit in tier five. But remember, we're trying to do all of these projects within the total amount allocated within this time period. You know, with the deficit, we may have to borrow a little bit more earlier, but it's so far out, we weren't comfortable just giving you a number, that we'll get there. And again, this is a projection of what to expect. And so it doesn't have any significant impact in order to get this moving forward earlier.
Thanks, Blaine. Further input? Yeah. Back to Carol.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who's going? Jesse?
Jesse, and then back to Carol.
Problems we won't have once we're back in person. I just wanted to thank staff for, I mean, this has gone through so many iterations. I know this meeting's run so long, I think we're kind of rushing through this more quickly, where this is kind of maybe the biggest thing we're voting on tonight. But I, I know, I have heard people in the public express a lot of concern about some of these big projects being right up front and feeling like we haven't really had sufficient time to kind of hash out whether that should happen in full view of the public. And I know that's a concern I've carried too. And, you know, ultimately, I think we've got what we've got, and I'm glad to move forward with what we've got. And I really want to thank staff for the work they've done to kind of reshuffle this over and over again. But I, I do want to make space to just acknowledge what I think is a valid concern, which is that some of the biggest financial decisions seem to have in some ways been made for us with regards to this tiering before we got to this point, especially with regards to the the Classic Center. And, and I can understand now that we're here, that it makes sense to keep going from where we're at. But nonetheless, that, there's something about that that doesn't sit super well with me. But that said, you know, all in all, I'm glad with where we're at, and I do really want to thank the folks who helped us get here. Because I know it was a lot of work, so.
Thanks, Jesse. Back to, back to Carol and Tim.
Well, see, Jesse, Commissioner Hool and I are so much in our, our newbie stage together that we're thinking about sharing the same message. And I, I did also want to acknowledge the concerns that people in the community have brought up and that I've had myself about having these big projects go at the first part. And just want to, without a community discussion and explanation of people really knowing what's, understanding why that decision is, is made. And perhaps to send a message to the commission in, what would it be? When's the next SPOST going to be? Twenty?
We'll do TSPLOST next year.
Yeah, well, but they won't be quite as big, but, but being really upfront at the beginning of the process that even with the citizen committee and such, of the nature of large projects and, and if there really is an understanding among the commissioners that there's a one large project or two or three that are going to be right up front, so that that's, that's transparent earlier in the process than it's been here. I want to, you know, thank the staff too for all the work they're doing here and really say thank you to my fellow commissioners for making the effort to get that renewable energy money spread throughout the whole tiering. And from the East Side to say thank you for the, the money and the, for the public, the East Side Library and the youth center being right up in the front as well. That, that should be built way before 2032 and the next SPOST. And we should have that in just, I think it's probably in three or four years of 2025 from what this spreadsheet looks like. So thank you all for making that a priority. The East Side thanks you, and our Clean Planet thanks you as well. Our hopes of a clean planet, I should say that.
Thank you. Coming Clean Planet. Go ahead, Tim.
I'll be brief. And yeah, first off, just thanks to staff and everybody for this process, and we're kind of here at the end of it. But I also had concerns from the beginning of us going down this route of creating such a long SPOST. And I didn't know where those concerns necessarily were, but I just felt like it could be possibly problematic. And I think it became very challenging for us, very challenging for staff. And I think it might behoove future commissions, if any of us are on it or not, and I guess in 2023 or so, to take shorter SPOST. I think there's, there's, it's really pragmatic, maybe this should have been broken into two separate SPOSTs. I think it would have been a lot easier for us. I think it would have been a little more transparent for the community, easier for the community to understand. I'm a little concerned now that 11 years from now, people are going to be forgetting a lot of the stuff that's even going on. So there's something for us to think about and for future commissions to think about. Any of those 15-year-olds right now who are watching this right now who might be future next time, back then, do a shorter SPOST, y'all. 12 years is a long time, and it's really difficult.
I, I keep thinking that I will have transitioned from riding my bike on the greenway funded through this program to maybe some, so, so some senior-oriented mode of transportation, so, so some other kind of wheels.
You're not that old.
Any other input? All right, there is a motion on the floor and a second. And I, I appreciate everybody on the elected body working through this. You know, we, we thank staff absolutely for providing us with options, you know, running many, many different financial routes, one of which is, is on the verge of acceptance, but many of others that we've, that we've laid aside in favor of this. But really to the elected officials here, you know, you all have worked together to come up with a package that will work. And all these projects will see the light of day and certainly will benefit the community. So thanks to all of you. So there is a motion on the floor from Commissioner Hool and a second from Commissioner Parker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Hallelujah. All right, we are moving on to item 24, the 2020 update to the Public Utilities Department Service Delivery Plan's financial element. And Commissioner Denson, if you just want to kick this off, because I know that you've been working toward a commission-defined option, I appreciate you engaging staff to, to get something out that I think is going to work for the benefit of the public.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And so my CDO is actually attached to the agenda items to the public, everybody can see it. This basically pushes back any increases to rates or fees till the beginning of the year. And then also downsizes those increases on the, on the front years. I had, I had been talking with Commissioner Hamby about still some concerns of it's still happening a little bit too early. And I know he had some comments that I would, I would definitely listen to as a possible friendly amendment. So if Commissioner Hamby wants to speak to that.
Go right ahead, Mike.
I'm muted. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, my concern, I mean, it's, it's a concern that, you know, if we can afford to wait till January, why not just go ahead and push it till, till the July of, of that, of that same year of 2022? I mean, that sometimes does give, as Commissioner Denson points out, a chance for for Public Utilities to do some planning. So we're not interfering with the planning, but we're just, we're just recognizing that folks in our community who are, who are, you know, a lot of people are hurting from this pandemic. So we don't know when they'll stop hurting from it, but hopefully, hopefully by the fiscal year of 23, that might, that might have some relief for them to have an additional six months there. Commissioner Denson's presenting another additional six months. The other thing to factor in, you know, certainly, certainly the winter average is, is what a lot of these water bills are based on. And I don't know if there'll be more or less because people are at home these days, but, you know, I'll point to examples, like the globe has been closed during this whole time, so their winter average is going to be low. But once they open back up, it's going, you know, their water goes and shoots through the roof. But there's examples like that. But I, I think, I think, you know, during, during these uncertain times, I think it would behoove us to, to consider just letting staff do the planning they need, knowing that this, this will be available in July of, of 23, and, and move forward like that. Commissioner Denson, would you, would you support an amendment to your commission-defined option to that effect?
Yeah, I, I would, Commissioner Hamby, like you said, just so, I think it does cause some issues with the, the winter average, which I had not really thought about. But also, I agree, we're not sure exactly how long we're going to be in this situation. And I don't feel comfortable raising fees or on people during a pandemic. So yes, I, I am happy to add that addition in there to change if it kicks in to FY22, starting in July 1st. And I make a motion for approval of that.
Actually, it'd be FY23, I think. Wouldn't it? Or 22?
Yeah, FY23.
Starts this July 1st.
Yes, FY23. Thank you, Mike. Yeah, so I make a motion for us to accept this CDO, but with the beginning of the rate increases starting on FY23 and no increases for FY22.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Hamby. Blaine, one question I, I had of staff is, you know, given the atypical kind of patterns of all of our behavior in the pandemic, are our winter averages from the past being used for residents by Public Utilities? I don't know if you or Director Stevens can just talk about how the winter average is established?
Well, we have no longer used the winter average. We went to annual averages with the June 2020 rate structure change. So if you remember, last year, made a lot of changes to the rate structure and cut the connection fee, the customer service fee, rather, sorry. And so we've gone to annual average now.
Well, since this pandemic has gone on for a year, maybe that's, that's even more losing to weight.
I, I guess, just we haven't had the opportunity to model the impact of the, of your, your amendment. But I think the practical matter would be that, and, and just so that everybody understands, we, we do, we have about $183 million of debt that was, we'll have to pay off for the next 17 years, you know, going back to the replacement of the water reclamation facilities and the refurbishment of the water drinking, of the drinking water facility. So we do a lot of our replacement and rehabilitation. We try to do it as a pay-as-you-go, where we have enough cash to underwrite, not have to borrow the debt. I think just as a practical matter, this would require, just like the original CDO did, we're going to have to borrow a little more money and a little bit earlier, and it may postpone some of the water line and sewer line replacements on the back end. But just offer that, you know, that's part of the impact of the change.
Further input? I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Hamby. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you both. Motion carries. All right, again, 23 is on hold, given some contract language update. And 20, 25, excuse me, is the policy for naming of streets and public places in Athens, Clark County. Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. I sent out a CDO for these renaming policies to the commission early last week, making a, a couple of clarifications and changes. On the street name changing policy, the only change there was specifying that it required 75% of all individuals who own properties. And so that way, it couldn't be confused for if one owner owns 75% of the houses there, that they could just do it by themselves. So there's a little bit of language there to clarify that. That was a concern that Commissioner Hool had. And then on, on the naming policy for leisure services for public facilities and parks and natural areas, there was some concerns about, for one thing, the Attorney's Office had some concerns about how some of the wording was done in this, for it to actually be enforceable. So my, my CDO includes the wording that the Attorney's Office put together. But it also does move to have our policy only be for individuals that have been deceased for at least three years. A, a number of commissioners had concerns about how if we're doing this naming buildings for living individuals, it can get very political, doing favors for each other and kind of get a little, creates weird situations, that there's been some precedent for that, maybe in this community and others. So that it would be, and also there was, there was the fact that a person living could have a building named after them, and in their later years possibly have some kind of behavior that would not represent Athens, Clark County well. That is why we have the three-year limit on deceased individuals, but it was kind of odd that living individuals were not held by the same, same probability. And then the, but I did make a specific exclusion there, where the Athens, Clark County Commission may make exceptions to nominate the name of living individuals for buildings if they found exceptional circumstances. So, so the commission could still go ahead and nominate living individuals to be included. And, and then it also includes the Attorney Office language that specifically says that the Athens, Clark County Commission may make exceptions in general to this policy when warranted by exceptional circumstances, and that they could operate outside of this policy whenever they saw it was necessary to. Which I know spoke to some of the concerns that Commissioner Thornton had also with a few of the pending applications. And she might want to speak to that a little more later about how we could still be moving forward with those if we wish to outside of this policy. So with that, I, I make a motion to accept this CDO.
I'll second.
Right.
I'm sorry.
So we've got a motion from Commissioner Denson and a second from Commissioner Link. So we've got a motion from Commissioner Denton and a second from Commissioner Link for the commission to find option. Uh, see, um, Commissioner Parker and then Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have kind of been mulling over, um, the property owner centricity of this and, uh, and several other policies, including like when we have discussed the neighborhood traffic management program. As a renter myself and representing a lot of renters in the area, um, thinking about, um, what impact this has on them, what sorts of input they're able to have. And it's actually come up in a very specific instance recently with regards to the, um, petition to rename, um, Carriage Court in, in honor of Thumpa Callaway. Uh, they, the, the petitioners reached out to me, um, earlier this week, I think, um, inquiring since they are residents of Clark Gardens and, you know, renters at that property. Uh, they have a petition of thousands of signatures of people who would like to see the name rechanged, but they're not the property owners. And so, um, if, uh, like if anyone can provide any sort of, uh, clarification of how that's dealt with within this policy, or if a, any thoughts have been, or like what your thoughts have been around that, for that kind of issue with regards to the support that you now have for the policy as stands.
Uh, I, I can speak from our discussion on the government ops, uh, committee when we assess this. Um, and we, the big part being that, uh, for the street renaming, uh, specifically, uh, I think is the one that you're, you're talking to. It's that, uh, anybody who, like the, the actual address of the property would be changing. And so we just need to have buy-in from the people who permanently own the property or, and or rent the property because it would just cause a lot of strain on them as property owners to have to change a myriad of things because of the having the address, the actual street name changed. But we did include, because we did recognize that, uh, tenants, of course, playing, uh, a large role and, and who lives on these streets. And so, uh, tenants would be included in, uh, the process that kind of alerts, um, and engages with everybody when, when one of these applications is put forward. But I, I mean, I, I, and I hear what you're saying about like wanting to have tenants leading, uh, a petition. I think they could still obviously start the petition, but they would have to get signature to the property owners. I think just, that's mainly because those property owners are going to either own that property or be trying to sell that property, uh, at some point. But I'm not sure a way around that, but.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Thornton?
Um, I, I looked at the 1992, um, uh, policy and, um, I understand why we needed a policy. Um, and I think that the recommendations and even the, uh, CDO is, is, it speaks to, um, it, it speaks to the need of, uh, of such a policy. I would like to hold this, uh, until next month for the three, um, requests that have been waiting over a year. And, um, I know they are in agreement that we need to have a policy, but I do think that they would like to have some input, which we really did not have, community input on this. And one person particularly, she did everything right, everything. She talked to four different people in the local government, including her commissioner. And now she's hit with this policy, which she understands it. And she understands the reason. She even asked, did she need to talk to residents in this particular community? And was told that she didn't have to do it right then. I think it's a matter of trust and good relationships that we just meet these people where they are. I don't think anybody's complaining about the policies because that 1992 policy, policy which we've been following has been, was, is ridiculous. It shouldn't have even been written on the paper that it's written on. But there are a lot of bad, um, experiences in, in this community with black people and the promises that have been made. I've heard since I got these calls and I reached back out, I did, I did do some homework. We're relating to, for example, Bishop Park, that we got, uh, federal money through Model Cities. And I believe it was, um, $2,000 and, I mean, $2 million. And a million went to Bishop Park. And they split the other, uh, mi, uh, million between Thomas Lay and, uh, East Athens. It's those kinds of things that, um, this community, when we're talking about equity, we just need to be inclusive. We didn't have any, um, real feedback. Uh, people just did what they thought they were supposed to do. And here we are, um, bringing up a policy. I do not object to the policy. I support it 100%, but I would like to make a motion that we at least hold it off until, um, next month and give these people the respect that they, they deserve. If, if these folk waited a, over a year, then we should be able to wait at least one month. I'm not, I'm not pushing no changes. I'm not advocating for no changes. I'm just asking for us to give folk a little bit of respect and give them a time. If they waited a year, we could wait one month and at least let them gather their thoughts. They may even have some different ideas once they see the policy. But, um, I would hope that, um, I could get us, first of all, I don't, thank you, um, Tim. I'm not trying to disrespect you. Um, I appreciate you. So, but I would hope that, uh, we could do this next month, let everybody exhale a little bit because there's some bad feelings now, um, boiling up. And, uh, I don't think we want to be in that position, not over 30 days. So my motion is to table it for one month, let everybody catch their breath and, and, um, make the vote next month.
Um, I'll second that. I'd also, um, I was just, uh, invited to be included in the, uh, naming change in my district. So I, uh, can use that time to get involved and help work, uh, with my constituents, um, with that. And, uh, I do have experience with some of the name changing stuff. So I think I can help them out with that because I don't believe there's an address now that I learned it was Carriage Court, not Carriage Lane. I've learned a lot just in the last day about this project in my district. So, um, that'll give me time to help that, um, topic. And it might not be as complicated if there's not an address on it, if the addresses are all Carriage Lane. So I, I second, uh, putting a hold on it. And maybe it's just that we would need to wrap up what's in the hopper right now before we change it. And we can, uh, be talking about that in the next month as well.
So, uh, just for clarification, uh, Commissioner Thornton, you want to put the, is it that you want to put it on hold to get input from the folks that are currently engaged in this process? Or would you like to see those currently in process and that, which have been for a while, move forward under the policy as stands since, you know, it's kind of, I would agree that it's kind of unfair that they've been kind of waiting on us to make, to, to do our due diligence on it because this policy change has been in the works for several months now.
It was.
Give it time, like, give it time for whom?
Yeah, um, mainly the people who are in the hopper now, um, that have been involved. And it's a lesson for anybody else in the future. But I'm really concerned about the three, uh, requests that, uh, have been on hold for over a year.
Commissioner Hool and then Denton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm glad Commissioner Thornton, speaking of these concerns, um, I spoke to some folks today as well about this. And, um, you know, people have been getting pinballed around for a while while this policy was getting worked out. My understanding is that in the future, this policy should keep people from getting pinballed around and make everything clear and easier. And I, I think that this policy also gives us an opportunity to pretty quickly and easily fast track those requests because the commission can exercise that option to just put things that we see fit, um, kind of on our own agenda. Um, so I guess I just wonder if anybody could speak to that. But certainly like hearing that other folks have been waiting a year or more, you know, us waiting a month just to get their input on this policy before we pass it, I don't think is a bad idea either, you know? So I, I'm okay with putting it on hold, but I, my understanding also is that I, I think we could, um, like as soon as this policy is in place, we've then kind of clearly established for ourselves that we can take those things that have been sitting in the hopper, so to speak, and, and act on them rather immediately. Um, so please correct me if I'm missing anything there, staff or Tim and, or Commissioner Denton and, Commissioner Thornton, if you still think it would be good to hold just to get, uh, public input on the pros, the, the policy itself as like a measure of like good faith and due diligence with them, I, I'd support that. So.
Commissioner Thornton, y- your intent is for those projects to be able to move forward right now, correct?
My, 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 my intent is for them to, to, to feel a little bit of respect. That, that's where I'm at. Um, it's, 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 it's not, I'm sure, I drove down Odd Street today, uh, which is a weird little street. And I don't think it'd be a big difference to go ask 75% of the folk. But we have been promised so many things. You'll tell us today, oh, we're going to do this after we pass the policy and stuff don't get done. And I'm, I'm not pointing about anybody particularly here in this commission, but that is the experience for a lot of people. And the only thing they're asking for is 30 days, exhale and come back to it. And if they, and, and just put this way, it may not get passed in 30 days. I mean, whatever they present may not get to 75% names, whatever. But we don't need to look like we're the stumbling block. The naming of the street of Carriage Lane, we may not get the questions answered that, uh, Commissioner Parker is talking about, or the 75% that you need to okay it. But then that's on the community. But I'm just saying that we have heard so many promises and what fuck are we going to do later on, and it never happens. We just want to be able to exhale a little bit and pick up and go with whatever the commission, um, votes on next month. That's all. I'm not asking for no special favors. I'm not trying to change the policy. I'm not trying to change the CDO. I'm not doing that, none of that. But I do think that the folk that have been waiting should have more than a week to, or two weeks to know this is what is coming down the pipe.
To Tim and then I'll circle back to Mariah.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think to, to maybe speaking to what Commissioner Parker was, was kind of mentioning, like, I, I, I am fine and willing to actually have, I mean, part of this CDO be under that we go ahead and, treat those pending items that have been pending since 2019 that, that Commissioner Thornton is speaking to. And that we go ahead and, and move them to the next step, which is that this commission evaluates them on their merit so that they don't have to go through these steps. They don't have to go through this policy. Like, if, I mean, that way, I, I guess I agree, we want to have them respect. We don't have to make them jumping through extra hoops. So I'm, I'm happy to say, we go ahead and say that basically they move on to the, they have been nominated. Um, and then we can basically evaluate them on their own merits and have them go to the next steps of, of process. Uh, because I, I agree with Commissioner Thornton. I, I spoke with, uh, uh, with at least one of the petitioners, um, and completely understand, uh, his concerns. But therefore we can just go ahead and say that they're nominated and evaluate them on those merits. So, I mean, I'm happy to make that amendment, the CDO.
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Parker, I'm sorry, you were next. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mariah, and then I'll get back to Ovita. Sorry, it looks like Commissioner Parker's, uh, link was lost.
Oh.
Commissioner Thornton, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, turn it to you and then I'll get back to Mariah in a minute.
Uh, you know, this, this is, um, this is like, like, I'm, like, I got some other things going on right now. So I don't want to drag this out. Um, my comments are, aren't going to change. Um, and my point is, even if you move them to the next step, and for some lo, logical, legitimate reason, they are denied. They're going to say this was the plan in the first place. This is how they were planning to get rid of us. This is how they, was, I mean, for a legitimate reason. They do not ma, and, and Tim, you and I talked about one of the situations which I didn't know about when I did talk to you about, uh, one of the rec. And I promise you, for whatever reasons that they're denied, it's going to look like it was, uh, manipulated. So it's, it's so, it has nothing to do with our integrity. It is about, and if this is what they're asking for and they've waited a year, why would we not give, uh, give them a month? Just to, just to keep, keep the air clear. That's my, my, my only point.
So, so just a couple clarifying questions. Are you, are we wanting this month for, uh, public input? Or are you wanting us to go through that next step, which would be us sending it through, uh, to mayor and commission?
Mayor, Mayor, can I say something here, please? Uh, if we could, if we could just go ahead and vote to extend this a month and then wait Tim and Ovita and whoever else can work it out and come back to us next month.
And thanks for that, Mike. I, I, I think what, uh, what Josh is interested in is, you know, i- is there a task for staff to do?
No, I don't, I don't see one yet. So maybe, maybe at the end of conversations with, with some of the commissioners, there may be, but not for right now.
Well, I, I appreciate that. Uh, for other folks, i- is there something that you would like to see staff do, uh, kind of in this?
Everybody, I think the three pe, the three folk, the three groups that I'm talking about definitely did need to get the official policies, the 1992 policy, and they also need to get the CDO. And everybody does not have that. If they want to contact any of the commissioners in between, or commissioners want to contact them in between now and next month, we're free to do that. But I do think there are a group of people that trusted a system that now has changed the rules, or it looks like it did. But the rules needed to be changed. Everybody I have talked to, I have told them that that 1992, um, was, it was, it was just a hot mess.
So, so Commissioner Thornton, you, you, your only anticipation is that the existing policy, the 1992 policy, and then the proposed policy be in full view of the public and, and that that would be the only request of staff?
Uh, that's it. That's.
Thank you. That's helpful. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, um.
And, and one more thing, Kelly, when, when somebody looks at that 1992 policy, they will, an intelligent person will realize that this new policy was not the set.
All right, um, I think, uh, Commissioner Parker's call dropped, uh, over to Commissioner Davenport and Hool.
Um, I would just like to put it on hold because that, I caught some stuff, not trying to belabor, but, um, just put it on hold now just because, uh, of existing policies, trying to get through just some other things, but that's all.
And, and the other, uh, one thing to add, just to clarify, there's two policies. And, and so this is the other question that staff has is, you know, so you're, the, uh, the previous policy for the facilities and the parks naming, that's the 2017 policy. So Commissioner Thornton, you're wanting all, all four?
I didn't even realize that, but yes, yes.
Okay.
But I want it to be made public, transparent. I want to know what people are signing on. They may look at it and say, ooh, no, I don't want to do this. But when they look at both, all the policies, they will see why we changed it. They will not be going by what one person or two people said. They will see what we see. And we have been talking about transparency, talking about transparency, and one month should give us, um, that little bit of transparency. That's all I'm asking.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hool?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I guess I just, I get the sense that there's a real value sometimes in just holding stuff so the public can wrap their head around it more. And this situation in particular, I think touches some pretty deep nerves for a lot of folks in the community. Uh, but it also, I think, reveals that sometimes our task as government, especially with COVID making everything weird and remote, is maybe to just give extra time for the public to be able to see stuff that we've worked through and we understand. And we're maybe even fully prepared to explain, but everyone else is still trying to make sense of. So sometimes maybe our own efficiency gets in the way. So sometimes maybe our own efficiency gets in the way of us being able to effectively communicate to the public. Without belaboring this, I guess I'll call the question.
Any further input at all?
I made my substitute motion.
All right. So I've got a substitute motion from Commissioner Thornton and a second from Commissioner Wright. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we will see this next month. All right. We have new business, and so I need a motion for suspension of rules.
No move.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport and a second from Commissioner Denson for suspension of rules. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Any opposed? All right. We're moving on to item number 26, which is indigent services funding. So it's about $267,000 of indigent services funding for the agencies that are listed here on the agenda report. Any input on this?
I'm making a motion we approve.
I'll second. I just have one question.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Link. Go ahead, Commissioner Link.
When will these agencies get this money in hand? From what I understand, and recent allocations have taken weeks and weeks to get to folks, and it's really hard for them to plan and allocate in the meantime. Do we have some clear ETA for this?
Well, sorry, I went off on another screen, wanted to make sure I wasn't muted. My understanding, these are just extension of the existing contracts, so there should be some nominal changes in execution. And I don't have a, I can't tell you, it'll be next Thursday, but it'll be a much quicker turnaround, I think, because it's simply a contract extension.
So within two weeks?
I think so. I can confirm that this evening.
Okay. I just think people need some general idea of when they'll have these funds available, because I know some of these agencies are drawing reserves in the meantime to service people.
Well, it is a shorter process, and I do know that, you know, we can make the effective date after this action, of course, but they could, you know, work back to a date. Mike could explore that with Attorney Drake and Director Banerjee.
I just want to encourage staff to get these money out to folks as quickly as possible.
Understood.
Any further input on the indigent funds? There's a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Link. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you all. All right. 27 is a slight modification of the leave of absence policy.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, there's an ordinance, if I can read it real quickly for the vote.
Thank you, Judd. I appreciate it.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to public health emergency leave and for other purposes.
All right. Thank you. All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Edwards. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. 28 is another employee impacting policy. This is the donated leave pool policy.
I'm making my approval.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, there's an ordinance, I'll read it before the vote.
Thank you.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to donated leave and for other purposes.
All right. Thank you. And I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Edwards. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. Last vote this evening, the 13th ordinance declaring local emergency related to COVID-19. All right.
Approve.
Second.
There's an ordinance, and I'll read that real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
An ordinance for the 13th declaration of a local state of emergency related to COVID-19 and for other purposes.
All right. Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards, and this is exactly like the version of this you saw last month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right. Do have a report, and then I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to manager, auditor, attorney, and then commissioners. Just some committee appointments to make everyone aware of. Jesse Hul will be the commission appointee to the Industrial Development Authority. Economic Development Director Ilka McConnell will be among the appointees to the Innovation Crescent Joint Development Authority, which we share with Coney Barrow and Gwinnett Counties. And Kelly Grow, MD, will be an appointee to the Hospital Authority. Actually, just as a formality, could I get a motion to accept those appointments?
I'm making a motion approve.
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all. I also do want to make a note that, given the authority of Advanced Behavioral Health Services, Commissioner Hul will serve as board member there and our liaison to that body. So thank you for being willing to do that, Commissioner Hul. A couple more things. We spoke in the context of our discussion about use of force, but focused very heavily on tasers a couple of weeks ago, and I noted that the Athens Safety and Justice Advisory Committee that's going to be supporting the administrative post, that's going to be working for Manager Williams, is getting ready to be launched. I read that language then, and so I'm not going to repeat that tonight, but I do want to announce membership of that Safety and Justice Advisory Committee. I will email this to you, Clerk Spratlin, so you have this. And so this is Aaron Barger as liaison to the Envision Athens Safety Team, where they do some comparable work. David Beck, John Donnelly, Rick Dunn, Russell Gabriel, Deborah Gonzalez, Kamaiu Hull, John Lash, Adam Lassala, Katie McFarland, Dawn Myers, Gweno Looney, Chief Spruill or Designee, and Terrace Thomas. So I wanted to make sure the public was aware of that. Also, commissioners know this, as I noted in the email, but on our agenda for a vote on the 16th of this month will be the resolution for approval by this body related to the Lenin Town neighborhood. Commissioners Hamby and Parker have been very involved in development of that, and I thank them for their work. So just wanted to let everybody know that that is forthcoming, so you'll be seeing that. In advance of that, today, I signed a proclamation from my office for apology and recognition of Athenians displaced by urban renewal projects broadly, because much of the work we're going to be doing in the coming years is going to stem out of our Lenin Town work and address other neighborhoods that were erased as well. So I want to make that clear. So I'm going to go ahead and move on, and first ask the manager if he has anything for us tonight?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Manager Williams. Attorney Drake?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Auditor Maddox? All right. And for commissioners, I will begin with Commissioner Hamby, and we'll go backwards to Commissioner Davenport.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything tonight, so I'm going to head out and make a motion to approve, or to, what is it we do?
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
I've got all kinds of wild stuff, Madam Mayor.
All right. Glad to be fluid.
Yes, Madam.
All right. So there's a standing motion to adjourn on the floor, so we'll recall that. Commissioner Thornton?
See y'all later.
I don't have any thing to add, but I would like to tap your memory, Mayor Gertz. I thought we were going to get an update or some direction on the prosperity pact tonight.
Yes, I have a composed draft. I'll go over that with you tomorrow, and we can formally roll that out.
Thank you. And that was my only comment.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, thanks. I just have a couple of things here. First, I just want to express concern for the two young men who were shot this past weekend in my neighborhood, the just 18-year-old Jeffrey and Jayden, and for the, just thinking of their families and the trauma that's been inflicted upon them as they lead their young lives, and those who are friends with them. And I think this is just something we as a community need to acknowledge, that this kind of violence exists in our community and address this, move forward as well. I want to thank you, Mayor Gertz, for acknowledging the past injustices, and it's too late for me to actually remember the wording, but the displacement of African-American neighborhoods and families and lives. I think it's important for us to do, that's a good move in the next direction. And then on a lighter note, I want to thanks, I was thinking at the beginning when we saw the award that Lori Lofton got for the water efficiency, of how Jesse and I were over there getting an introduction to that department, and we're so impressed with everyone in the water public utilities area. And just sort of send a thank you to all of the departments that gave Commissioner and Hul and I this incredible orientation. We had introductions with 18 different departments, so I want to thank them for all that, those efforts. We learned an enormous amount, and we both learned how to ask lots of questions, although I think we kind of knew that before. My little joke didn't go far there, but, and then finally, the last thing is that I sent out my first newsletter today as District Eight Commissioner, and if anyone in my district is listening and wants to get on that list, fortunately Commissioner Herod shared his mail list with me, so I got it out to a lot of people. But if there's anyone out there who's listening to this whole meeting and wants to get it, just send me an email, and I'll add that on to my list as well. And I'm going to pass it on because I'm tripping over words after five hours.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thanks. I think we were all in shock last month as insurrectionists stormed the Capitol the very day that we sat in this meeting. So I just wanted to take a moment and excoriate our U.S. Representatives, Andrew Clyde and Jody Heiss. Let them know how ashamed I am to be represented by them, how useless they are to this government and to this democracy through the actions that they perpetrated in the lead-up to the insurrection by giving voice to the conspiracy and the lies that this election was stolen and resulted in the loss of life at the Capitol. Two police officers and counting have lost their life defending our Capitol. So just had to take a moment to really say, you know, it's time to hold folks like Jody Heiss and Andrew Clyde accountable for their actions. They put our country and our city in disrepute and struck a strike against democracy itself. So Representative Heiss, I hesitate to even call you a representative. You are a true, you are a disgrace to this entire community and to your district. You should resign. You should be expelled. Andrew Clyde, you are a disgrace to this community. You should be expelled from Congress. You should resign. Thank you, everybody.
Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. Glad you're fluid, Madam Mayor. Feel free to fluidly address me anytime as well. Pretty excited about that. So first, I want to thank Mayor Gertz for the appointments and for the apology to Lenin Town. I think that's really meaningful, and I'm very excited for the upcoming adoption of the Lenin Town Resolution. I'm very committed to the great deal of work that that paves the way for, and I'm deeply appreciative of the work done by everyone who's been involved in the Lenin Town Project, the Baldwin Hall advocacy, and the many other parallel efforts for us to reckon with our past and meaningfully redress the harm done. I did want to just throw out there, someone pitched this idea to me earlier today, and I just wanted to make this ask for us to maybe dig into sometime in the hopefully near future. But, you know, we're dealing with not only an affordable housing crisis, but an increasing number of people enduring homelessness, and we're in the middle of winter and COVID. And I'm wondering if there's a way we can leverage some of the space in the classic center to help meet some of that need. You know, we've done a lot to advance a lot of the work there to expand, but I'd love to see us pursue perhaps creating some space in there for people to be at least temporarily housed to get through the winter and what's left of this worst part of COVID. And kind of glad we didn't have to get into tasers tonight, but I did share a lot of information with y'all earlier, which I'm glad to dig into, and if anyone from the public wants to ask, please contact me. I did want to end on one final appreciation for staff. Transportation and Public Works got right on some repairs to some potholes in Westwood Hills and along Tallisi Road. And, you know, you campaign on the reality of having to address potholes, and then you start to, and you start seeing them everywhere, and you start learning just how much it costs and just how much effort and equipment it takes. And I think that can make a real difference, and a lot of times it can make a real big difference in neighborhoods that are too often left out. So looking forward to curing more of those. And if anybody's wondering what a pothole counts as, it's literally the size of a pot, and it costs us less to fix them when they're that small. So feel free to hit up your personal commissioner if you have potholes in your neighborhood. I'll kick it over to the next person, or to the mayor.
Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll just jump on the bandwagon here, happy bandwagon here of being appreciative of the proclamation being written and crafted, apologizing for the role that the Athens City Government played in urban renewal. And I'm extremely excited about the Lenin Town Resolution coming before us and being able to vote on that. It's really exciting to see constituents step up and be able to work side by side with elected officials to work on policy and to work on acknowledging our history and doing that in tandem. And it's honestly like, I think, it's one of the best examples we have of where I think our government can really, really work and our community comes together. So I'm really looking forward to that. The next thing I want to do also, a little thank you out also out to PPW, the jump on deck of Commissioner Hul. Want to thank specifically Tim Griffith and Caleb Elder for the last two months coming out in the cold and doing outdoors, a little mini-town halls, one over for constituents on Sunset Drive, and the other one on Ashton Drive, and hearing people out, especially right now as we're waiting on the new neighborhood traffic management policy to come through, and working with them to acknowledge concerns and talk about ways that we could be working forward, and having some realistic fixes, like radar signs, stuff that we kind of found that we could use in the short term. But they've been very patient with me and the constituents, and it's been, and it makes my constituents very happy, so I always appreciate that. And the last thing I'll say is just, the next District Five virtual town hall is coming up on February 23rd, and we're going to be focusing on the policy of zero fair transit, which I'm very excited about talking about with people. And folks can sign up for the town hall and register for it at timdensonforathens.com. Thanks much.
Thanks. Commissioner Link?
Yeah. First of all, I would like to follow up on Commissioner Edwards' comments and join him in calling out Jody Heiss and Andrew Clyde, not just as disgrace, but as traitors to our democracy and our constitution. They should both be removed from office as directed by Amendment 14, Section 3 of the U.S. Constitution, which they violated repeatedly in their actions and words in recent weeks. So I hope that those individuals are out there somewhere listening, and that others will recognize them as traitors to this democracy, and they will resign, leave their jobs, be expunged from office, and be forbidden from ever holding office again, and lose their right to bear arms, quite frankly. And I would also like to remind everyone that we are still in the middle of a raging pandemic. Things have been very, very, very bad at our local hospitals. I've heard from constituents who work there or have families working there. They've leveled off a bit in recent weeks, but I hear the helicopters every night. I was woken up in the middle of the night, three times last night, helicopters landing at the hospital a block away from me. I can imagine patients are coming in from elsewhere. We have a more virulent strain, a more contagious strain of COVID that is in Georgia. It is in Gwinnett County, just two counties over. I imagine it's probably in Athens, considering we have 36,000 UGA students who are running around. who are running around naked face downtown, going to bars, playing powder puff football, having house parties. Um, I've got lots and lots of, um, photos over social media and email. Um, these kids are back at it, so I'd like to ask management to please, um, ask ACCPD to step up enforcement downtown, step up checks on these bars. Um, it's, it's, things are going to get worse. Before they get any better, we have a vaccine, but the rollout's very slow. Most of us are not going to be qualified to get it for many, many months. In the meantime, we do have this more contagious strain, and more and more research is coming out about the after effects of COVID infections, even if you have a mild infection. Um, they're saying one out of five people have evidence of psychosis. Um, people are showing up with type one and type two diabetes. Um, there's definitely fatigue, um, gut issues. There's, there's all kinds of after effects. So, even if you have a so-called mild case and don't require hospitalization, there are lifetime impacts. Um, and, you know, I have a feeling we are going to be finding out for decades the after effects of this disease. And I want to urge everyone to do everything in their power not to get it, not to transmit it, stay home as much as possible, always, always wear your mask, double mask, they're saying to, please double mask, wear your N95s. Um, just do whatever you can to be as safe as possible. And I, I do want to urge our management to, um, enforce our face mask ordinance, um, enforce the state mandated capacity guidelines, um, especially in, in bars and restaurants where it is, you are most likely to get this disease.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I usually keep this short or, uh, non-existent, so I will just say briefly, uh, I want to wish everyone a happy Black History Month slash Black Futures Month. I'm glad that we are taking advantage of this special time to acknowledge some, um, important black history in Athens through, uh, approval of the Lenin Town Resolution this month. And we can make, uh, actions of redress and recognition, um, a more common part of our government, because I think there's a lot of, uh, history that needs to be unearthed, to be reckoned with and to be atoned for. And so I'm glad we're starting to make steps in that direction, um, through that. And it's, I want to say thank you to everyone that came together to support survivors of the, um, fire at Hallmark last Wednesday. Um, there's just information about how you can support, um, those, um, impacted, um, on my Facebook page, um, they're raising money for, um, the little one that made it out, um, through Clark Middle School, um, the Student Support Fund. And so if folks are interested in making sure their immediate needs are met, they can donate there. Um, and I think that is everything. Thank you all. Very much have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport?
I'm going to read the Bible word for word. Okay, just kidding. Nobody likes, anyway, um, I'll be having a town hall roundtable, um, March, April, I'm trying to work out the schematics for that. Um, we're going to talk about East Fox and issues in District One. Um, thank you, Commissioner Parker. Happy Black History Month, happy Valentine's Day. Um, and thank the mayor for the State of the Union. And I'm ready for this conversation for the, um, February 16th Lenin Town Resolution. Um, because, you know, be, be quite honest, I, I just, I support it, but I think that if folks don't, to be quite honest, if people think that the government, if people think urban renewal is the only way, uh, the only thing that displaces black people, I find that laughable, but, um, I think the Lenin Town Resolution is a good start.
Thank you. All right. Um, Commissioner Hamby made a motion for adjournment. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. We've got a second from Commissioner Parker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Be safe out there.